And via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at Nashua NH.gov/AgendaCenter. Please select the zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3056 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poyer, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak, when public input is requested, please use the raised hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a Computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Please mute your microphone until called upon to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, but they are different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Myself, Maryelle McKay, our Chair. We have Mr. Steve Lionel. We have Mr. Jack Carrier, Mr. J.P. Boucher, our clerk, and we also have Mr. Josh Mulli, who will be voting in all cases tonight. We have Mr. Carter Falk, our Deputy Planning Manager, and we also have Ms. Kate Poyer, our zoning coordinator. We will start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Are there any Board members on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Mr. Jack Carrier.
Present.
Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Josh Mulli.
Present.
Mr. Steve Lionel.
Present.
And myself, Maryelle McKay. We are also, I am also present. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you very much. We will begin with the first case. Owner Ronald P. Nastel G. Houdin, LaFavor Folio LLC applicant, 115 Lock Street, Sheet 41, Lot 21, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15, Number 15, to remove existing building and construct one eight-unit multifamily building along with associated site improvements. This is in the GI zone in Ward 3. This was tabled from the March 28, 2023 meeting. And I see Attorney Proman. You have the floor, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm, Madam Chair, just a point of order. Do you want to move to take this off the table?
Oh, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to take this case from the table?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion to take this case for 115 Lock Street off the table.
And Mr. Carrier seconds. Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I also vote in favor.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Proman, Attorney with Proman here at Nashua. With us tonight in the auditorium is Tom Zajak, Project Engineer. On Zoom is Jessica LaFavor Ortiz, one of the owners of LaFavor Folio, the project applicant. My first comment tonight is, thank you very much. Last time we were here, in our last episode, we heard the Board's concerns. You were gracious enough to table the case, and we have submitted a new plan that we believe addresses your concerns, and we can briefly talk through those now. Your concerns, as outlined to us last time, were kind of three and a half concerns. You were concerned about the buffer impact coming off the Nashua River. You're concerned about the density of the eight units, and you're concerned about the dumpster location. Those were three. And then the other half was that there was some question about meeting the criteria of the RC District with our variance from the general industrial, and we can address those. We have a new plan. That's before you at the moment, and again, we believe we have addressed your concerns. We have minimized our buffer impact. There's a 75-foot buffer off the Nashua River, and by removing one of the units and flipping the units from one side of the lot to the other, we're able to minimize the buffer impact that you see on the plan. We have a very small encroachment into the buffer for the fire truck turnaround. And I will say to you that that layout that you see for the fire truck turnaround is a worst-case scenario. That's a just-in-case. We may not even need to go that far into the buffer with respect to that. We may be able to keep it out altogether, but the initial design from Mr. Zajak is showing that, so you see it. And, you know, if it's a concern, we can talk about it, but we've really done our best to come out of the buffer. And if we, excuse me, if we do have to work within the buffer, there's a process through the shoreline exemption, the shoreline urban exemption that we have that was part of the submittal that we provided, that we will have to go to Conservation Commission. But then the Conservation Commission then makes a recommendation to the Planning Board, not necessarily back to this Board. But we've done our best to come out of the buffer, and again, we may not even impact it at all, but we're showing the worst-case scenario. The concern about density, it was heard loud and clear. We had a lot of back and forth on our team, and we believe the seven units works at this site, and we reduced down by one unit. And as a result, we could reduce the parking requirements that you see on the plan. We believe there's, with the seven units, it reduces the impact, the overall impact, the overall density. We think the site works. The dumpster is gone. We will be having our condominium documents require private contractor curbside recycling, which is allowed in the city, and so the dumpster issue is gone. The last issue that you had, that we had some back and forth about meeting the RC standards with our GI variance, doesn't really apply, but nonetheless, this plan that you see before you meets, is RC compliant, meets the open space requirements, all the setbacks. So we've addressed that, even though it wasn't really required to address it, but we did anyway. By flipping the building from one side of the lot to the other, it gives us a better opportunity to protect some trees. I can't guarantee that we're going to protect all the trees with this layout. It's a very tight lot, but with this moving the building from one side of the lot to the other, it gives us the better opportunity to try and preserve trees to the best that we can. And Madam Chair, that's all I had. We heard our variance criteria at the last meeting. You know, if you want, I could repeat those, but I believe everyone was comfortable with the concept, this being, this doesn't really belong in the general industrials district. It's all residential around us, so that's really all we had tonight for the Board unless folks had questions for me or Tom Zajak. I'd be happy to take those now.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Attorney Proman, I'm just asking about your comment about flipping the design from one side of the lot to the other, comparing the old and the new layouts. I don't see that change. Could you explain that to me?
Well, and honestly, Ms. Lionel, perhaps a wrong. Did we have the lots on the other side, the units on the other side?
Yes.
Oh, okay. My apologies. I've looked at so many iterations of this plan. That's my error. We kept, we looked at, in our discussions over the past two weeks, we had the plan, we were showing the units on the other side, but you're right. We kept them on the same side.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Apologies for that. That's, I've seen too many plans.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Could we please have quiet? If you'd like to have a conversation, please take it outside of the auditorium. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Attorney Proman. Mr. Carrier.
Just to follow up on, there was discussion, as you mentioned, last two, two weeks ago about like the idea of meeting the zoning for this. Did that end up shifting anything, you know, to meet it for the RC zone versus the general industrial zone? I mean, I don't, it wasn't clear to me last week whether that required anything different or not, because I couldn't recite those offhand.
Well, the big difference was the open space requirement, and with the additional eighth unit, we were under the open space requirement for the RC District, but with the seven units, we are over. 35% is required. We're proposing 37% open space.
Okay. And just another question. I was just curious, there's like a two-foot jog in the structure. Is that, just curious why that was there? Not that it's made relevant to this application, but like, you know, there's like four units, and then it cuts over two feet and then goes to the other three units. I just, was that some sort of?
That sounds like a good question for the project engineer. I'd be happy to answer it. They also have Tom Zajak.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Zajak, a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson here in Nashua. The jog was something that we had done on some of the other projects, specifically next door, and it's really just architecturally to break up that facade. You know, on the other project, we had eight and 10 units, so we were trying to keep things consistent and not just to have one linear facade there. And just to answer your other question about the setbacks, so in terms of the RC, I know there was, we talked about open space, which we're now meeting, but the front yard setback from GI to RC is actually the same. It's 10 feet. We're setback 15 feet. And then on the side yard setbacks, the GI is 10 and the RC is 7. So actually, we'd be allowed to, you know, encroach further, and the rear yard is more restrictive in the RC, but we're with the buffer, we're nowhere near the back of the property.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I will ask if there is anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this Is there anyone on Zoom who would care to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything. Is there anyone here who would care to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name, and members of the Board, my name is Brian Major. I am an attorney with an office at 19 Technology Way in Nashua, and I'm here tonight again representing Smart Investments LLC. With me is Dana Smith. He and his wife Angela own Smart Investments. I apologize if I've got a gravelly voice tonight. Someone might make a joke about a lawyer not being able to speak and that being a good thing, but I do apologize. I'll try to be as clear as I can. The plan is, the plan, I would like to incorporate my comments from the last meeting we had rather than go over them again. The plan is a step in the right direction, so to speak. It does address some of the problems that were present on the previous plan. However, the plain and simple point in fact is, my client owns 119 Lock Street. He's got a 42,000-square-foot lot. He's got 41% green space. We agree, we agreed at the last meeting with the applicant that this property is not suitable for GI use. It's just simply not. However, and there is basically RC property to the north of Lock Street, we would suggest to you respectfully that you should incorporate the requirements of the RC zone. If you're going to effectively rezone this parcel, and we agree it probably is more suitable to be part of the RC zone, then you should apply the density requirements and all other requirements of the RC zone. To not do so doesn't make any sense. The RC zone, you'll note from your, Mr. Falk's memo to you, requires a maximum density of 3,484 square feet per unit. The applicant's lot is 19,978 feet. We would submit to you that this would allow, under the ordinance, if you do consider this to be part of the RC zone, 5.73 units. Now, my client certainly wouldn't object or jump up and down in anger if the Board saw fit to allow six units, but we still feel seven units is too many units for this particular parcel. It's only a 19,978-square-foot lot. Parking, under the new proposal, the applicant did address some of the problems with the previous proposal, with the previous drawing, namely the green space, and we're encouraged by that, and the density as well. But you're still left with a simple point. In fact, if you look at the new plan, it appears that there are four parking spaces on the plan right now. There's additional parking provided with garages under, for sure. People don't use garages. They just don't park in a garage, particularly when the weather's good. It's going to force traffic and parking out onto Lock Street. There's limited parking on Lock Street. You've got a situation down there, and the property which my client owns, which has been constructed many years ago, contributes to the situation, basically. He didn't create that situation. He just acquired the building 25 years ago. But density is a unique problem, because density, if you have a request for a variance for something like a front yard setback, and every other property in the neighborhood is equally set back, that makes sense. The problem with density is it's cumulative. This will add to the problem on Lock Street in that area right now. It'll force parking out onto Lock Street. We would submit to you that basically the proper thing to do is require, you can impose conditions on a variance request. We would tell you it's our position that it would be perfectly reasonable to impose a condition on the granting of this variance and limit this to six units. With six units, you could have more parking on the premises, and it would allow, basically, it would be virtually compliant with RC zone, which is across the street. We have concerns about the decks overhanging and intruding into the second-story decks, intruding into the side yard setback. I don't think those issues have been addressed.
Excuse me, Attorney Major, you have about a minute left.
Okay. Thank you very much. I won't take the whole minute.
That's okay. Please, two.
We think that, we think that the project would be perfectly viable, perfectly viable with six units on a 20,000-square-foot lot. There's simply no denying that, and so to ask for a variance beyond that, we think is unnecessary. Thank you very much for your time.
Attorney Proman, would you like to respond? I did. For what? I asked, I did. That's how Attorney Major, oh, anybody else? Is there anyone else in opposition here, present? Is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to speak in opposition? I don't see anything. The floor is yours, sir.
Madam Chair, good evening again, Andy Proman. Couple points. First off, we don't have decks. We have patios. Patios at grade are allowed to encroach into the side yard setback. The plan complies with that issue. Second of all, I don't know what Brian's talking about. I grew up my entire life never having a garage. I've since moved into a townhouse condo with a garage. That's my favorite feature of the house, all right? I wish I had more garage space. We are proposing seven units, which is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. If you look at Mr. Falk's memo and he lays out the density for neighboring properties, we are right in line with everybody else. We have a less dense property being proposed tonight than next door at 111-113. And finally, don't forget that, you know, our clients want to price these units to the neighborhood, and what I mean by that is we can't sell six $700,000 condo units in this site on Lock Street rate here, and so to compensate for that, we have a number of units that factor into that. So, I mean, we could do one unit. We could do two units, but the reality is that this pencils out at seven units. It meets the character of the neighborhood. It meets similar projects in the neighborhood, and we are requesting a seven-unit approval for this, for this application tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Neely.
Attorney Proman, this may be for Mr. Zajak.
Sure.
Taking a look at the garage or the building here, will the garage fit an SUV comfortably? I mean, realistically, what we're talking about, and what Attorney Proman says, he loves his garage, loves parking in there, and most of us have SUVs now, so part of what the other folks are pushing back on is saying they're never going to park in a garage. Are these garages big enough to fit an SUV? Are people going to use it for their cars, in your opinion?
So, Tom Zajak, again with civil engineer with Heiner Swanson. So, having seen the same units be built right next door, I think the depth there is either 22 or 24 feet, which far exceeds the city's requirement for parking, which is a 9-by-20 space. So, the unit itself is 32 feet deep, so yes, it would hold an SUV or a larger pickup truck for parking, and I agree with Attorney Proman that's a big amenity to the site and to these units, to have that garage space.
And will another vehicle be able to fit outside of the garage? So, most folks have two vehicles. Where's the second vehicle going to go? I mean, part of what they're talking about is the congestion on Lock Street, and I wouldn't want to be parking on Lock Street, so where is somebody going to put their second vehicle?
Correct. So, on the other project next door, we did have enough width to the lot to have a single garage space and a single driveway space, which would be a minimum of 20 feet. We don't have that here, so there would be one garage space for each unit, and then there would be the four spaces in the back. So, we are compliant. Nashua requires 1 1/2 to 1.9 spaces per unit for multifamily for parking. We're representing that on the plan. Of course, we balance the parking need with, you know, impervious cover and impact the buffer, so we're trying to strike that balance here, but the plan before you does comply with the city's parking regulations.
Any other questions? Attorney Proman, Attorney Major?
I think I'll leave it at this.
Thank you very much. Seeing as there's no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
Yeah. I, also, should we take issue with Mr. Major's comment about nobody uses their garage? I certainly use my garage. Both my wife and myself park in our garage, and most of our neighbors, in fact, park in their garages, too. That some people don't park in the garage is not in itself a reason to deny this use variance. Also, this is in the GI zone, and yes, it's residential, but the ordinances are that there are density requirements for the GI zone. The plan that's proposed is compatible with adjacent units, adjacent properties, and so I don't consider the density to be an issue. I do appreciate the very, the change in the plan to reduce the intrusion into the buffer zone, to move the dumpster, and I am in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I appreciate the change to the plan from two weeks ago. I was hung up myself on the dumpster and that much impervious surface in the buffer, but that's been addressed. Just a note, I just want to clarify what Attorney Proman said, or maybe it was Mr. Zajak, about those are decks, I'm sorry, they're patios, you know, on the ground, not decks in the air, and I think that makes a big difference to, you know, privacy of the abutting property. It's not like a balcony overlooking. So, I appreciate that. I was thinking they were balconies from the plan. Just to speak to the concern about parking, I mean, perhaps there'll be some parking on Lock Street, but I do feel that this seven-unit design is really consistent with what's on either side of it, what's in the neighborhood. You know, if the abutting property that's significantly more dense than this, I mean, if there was a real issue there, they could always reduce the density. I know it's been there for a while, but, you know, it's much denser than this, and it's been an ongoing, you know, big structure for decades now, so I'm not persuaded by, you know, the density just really destroying or causing a problem to the neighborhood. I think it meets the criteria, and I'm inclined to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
I'm in favor of this application. We certainly had some spirited discussion on the last meeting. I appreciate the fact that they have made some changes to address many of our concerns. Many members of the Board were concerned about the dumpster in the wetlands area. They've removed it. They've moved to add additional open space. They've addressed the tree issue. One of the neighbors had called in concerned about trees disappearing. They've brought that up tonight and addressed it. Really, these folks have done everything they can, and really, in my opinion, have moved towards Attorney Majors and their client to really try to meet them in the middle. And I think this building does fit the character of that area. We are looking to add housing to the Nashua area. We can see what this building's going to look like based on its neighbor, so really, for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm going to say that I agree with, sorry, what was said by my fellow members. Again, I believe that the variance criteria has been met, and, you know, I think we've, we're using the reference of the RC zone, kind of, just kind of as a placeholder, but we all know that zoning can't be changed unless it's done by the Alton. So, I do appreciate, you know, what was said about that, but again, I believe, as Mr. Carrier says, and Mr. Lionel said, that this does fit into the neighborhood.
Thank you. And myself, I'm also in favor for all of the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Ronald P. Nastel G. Houdin. Applicant is LaFavor Folio LLC, Address 115 Lock Street, Sheet 41, Lot 21, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to remove existing building and construct one seven-unit multifamily building along with associated site improvements. This is in the GI zone, Ward 3. The Board believes that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, which are the size of the property, its location, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the use variance. The Board believes that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe that it will not adversely affect the property values, the surrounding parcels... We believe that it will not adversely affect the property values, the surrounding parcels, which are of very similar construction. And we believe this is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve the use variance application.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Carrier, for your second. Mr. Lino, how do you vote?
Mr. Lino votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That's a unanimous decision. Congratulations, your variance has been granted. Thank you for your presentation. Please understand that any member of the public may appeal any decision made by this board, and they have 30 days with which to do so. Should you need any assistance, please re-refer back to the Planning Department to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Porier. Thank you again, Attorney Proman and Mr. Zajak. Thank you. Case number two. Ijeema and Charles O'Quory, owners, 46 Cox Street, Sheet 137A, Lot 3, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3A for a minor encroachment to encroach a maximum of four feet into the 10-foot required left-side yard setback to construct and attach 21-by-22 two-car garage. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 2. This was postponed from the March 28, 2023 meeting. Is there some, I see there's someone here to present the application. Could you please state your name and address, sir, for the record?
Good evening all. My name is Charles, Charles O'Quory. I'm here with my wife.
Good evening. My name is Ijeoma O'Quory.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
Alright, thanks. Thank you so much for the privilege to make a formal request for a minor encroachment to the side of our property on 46 Cox Street. Currently, we have a small ranch. We have four kids. They were there from kindergarten. Right now, they are all in college and graduating. And a couple of years ago, they called us for a family meeting and said that...
Excuse me, Mr. O'Quory, could you either pull the mic closer to yourself, take it? You can remove it, or you could remove the mic from that holder if it's easier for you, sir.
Is this better?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a small ranch. And we decided to add to it to be able to accommodate the kids. We have four kids. So we are closing up the current garage that we have in the ranch and adding a two-car garage to the left of our lot. After we received the building permit from the city and were ready to start construction, we realized that we didn't have enough room to conform to the 10-foot side setback required by the city. So we, that's why we're here. Currently, the 21-foot garage addition that we're doing encroaches to the side by 3 feet 7 inches, which leaves us 6 feet 5 inches. We know that by the requirement for minor encroachment, it has to be 6 feet maximum for us to, between us and the boundary line. Currently, what we have is 6 feet 5 inches. And that's what we are applying for the board to approve, so that we can proceed with our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Carrier.
I was just wondering, when you were conceiving this design, you said you applied for permits to the city. Was it, and how did it come to light that the proposed garage, you know, was beyond this 10-foot side yard setback? When did that come to light?
Thank you very much. So when I finished the original proposal, I based it off the GIS map. The GIS map gave me 31 feet from the existing property to the line defined by the GIS map. So from that, I just considered 31 feet, which left 10 feet 6 inches. It was after the permit that we had set out the foundation, ready for excavation, and realized that we didn't have 10 feet in real life. So I came back to the city because I didn't want to break the law.
Okay. And then another question I have is if this was rewound back to the beginning of your design, and, you know, first of all, it's a pretty design, I got to tell you that. That's quite a step up from, your proposed design is quite a step up from what's there. But, you know, I can't help but notice the garage is on the right-hand side. And it seems to me the house is maybe set a little bit to the left. Was there any consideration of having a two-car garage on the right-hand side, having all the square footage you want in the house and meeting both side yard setbacks?
I don't have enough room on the right-hand side. Based on the monitored survey that we received from HSI. I don't have enough room for a two-car garage to the right, but I do have.
Okay, because there's one bay there now. So if you widen that bay to two bays, there's not room?
Oh, no. If I, that bay currently, I can explain what's going on here. This is what we have now, right? Single-car garage. I blocked it off here. That's the living room. The kids are upstairs. So that entire, this is the garage, existing garage, that I blocked off.
Well, I guess where I was going was like, there's many homes that have, you know, a two-car garage incorporated the house, you know, with living space above. And I didn't know if there was any consideration of that sort of design, where you get living space above and a garage. So you get, say, two bays and living space above. And my rough thought is you'd have the same square footage, living space, and two bays, and meet the side yard setbacks. But that's just pencil sketch, me, and I could be wrong.
Yeah. Currently, it's a small ranch, really congested. My kids cannot even come home with their friends to this house. They keep complaining every day. I would have considered moving. But I told them, since this is what they are used to, and this is what I do for people, for clients, that I'll try as much as possible to accommodate everybody. So I moved the kids upstairs. Maybe the living, the living room is tiny. And by the time I put in the stairwell upstairs, we lost that living room. So I had to incorporate the existing garage into the whole first floor and turned, I left the kitchen. Minimal reconstruction on the inside, but I just jacked up bedrooms upstairs for them.
So is your proposed construction, is it a whole new framed house? Or is it taking off the roof and building a second wall on top of the first, you know, the first floor wall?
Taking off the roof. That's it.
Alright, thank you. That's the only questions I had at the moment.
Mr. Boucher.
I think I know the answer, but you're a professional architect?
I have a master's in architecture, sir.
Yeah, okay. So in this design, because I was kind of wondering the same question that Mr. Carter was asking, but then I said there must have been a purpose on why the garage is going to the other side of the house because of some design criteria that you had, that you needed to do. So my assumption is, I just want you to confirm that, again, the reason why you moved the garage to the side is because your plan dictates that you kind of need that space there.
Yes, sir.
I think in your ranch, I have a ranch too, I think there's an existing foundation that, and obviously, you're trying to utilize what you have already.
That's correct, sir.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carrier.
One other thing I forgot to ask, what I was thinking about was, is there any consideration for having like an extra deep garage? Say, one that meets the side yard setback, but still has room for two cars or two cars plus, essentially going deeper than, you know, the, I think it's maybe 21 feet or something proposed now, but, you know, making it as long as the foundation of the house or longer? I'm just wondering about that concept.
Yeah, there's a lot of thought that went into this. But primarily, top priority was cost. I was trying as much as possible to save on this. The current basement has windows on that side of the, so I stopped the garage so that I don't block off the window. That's why I didn't go deeper.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Mr. Corey, to follow up on that, you obviously know you've got a ton of neighborhood opposition here to what's going on.
That's correct. I understand. I appreciate that.
We're going to address that, and I'm sure these folks are going to as well. So let's, you know, let's get ahead of this. Now, that being said, what Mr. Carrier was saying is, we wouldn't be here if you guys decided to change the design of your garage. You wouldn't be into the area between your neighbors. You wouldn't be asking for an exemption. Is that an option for you going forward? If for some reason this does not pass tonight, and we all still have a very open mind on this, if this does not pass tonight, is that an option for you to go forward with a different design, to stay within your allotted area?
One thing I try to do is to be honest, very honest. And I can tell you, I don't have an option.
So why don't you have an option?
Because I've, we've gone through several iterations on this design. Like I said from the beginning, cost of building this, I don't have a lot of money. And I was looking like the poorest dad in this country because I couldn't make the house comfortable for my kids. That's why I'm using the existing footprint and I'm just jacking it up. This is like the most economical option for me. Minimal excavation, minimal concreting, and just framing. Taking the roof up, same footprint, and just creating bedrooms upstairs with a stairwell. The garage stops at that first floor level, period. Cost is the primary determinant of this.
Mr. Lino.
Just wanted to mention that I understand cost is important to you, but it's not a criteria that we consider in our decision.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate, I was just being frank with everything I did, right? If, I hope this is not a digression. I've been in this country, I came with my wife, with Martin, practically Martin. My kids are all born here. They went through kindergarten. They are in college and graduating, post-college, post-grad students. Two of them went through Cornell. They can bring their friends home from Cornell. I feel embarrassed, and they keep telling me every day, Dad, what are we doing here? As babies, it was okay. I actually went looking for a house for them, for us to move from this, just to make them feel that Dad is making an effort not to make their lives miserable. I went and priced the house with four bedrooms, so that I look and say, I just want to move. I couldn't touch it in Nashua. I don't want to live Nashua. Over half a million, $600,000. I thought, well, this is what you do for other people. We're not doing it in this house. We are used to this. I told them, I gave them a word that I was going to do it in this house for them. I have, I did, I've done everything for them in this house. This is all they know, so that they can come home and they can bring their friends home. And I'll stop feeling miserable that my kids, at their age, cannot come back from college with their friends.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the board for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Mr. and Mrs. O'Quory, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Roubaix, and I live with my wife Jaclyn and our three children at 36 Cox Street, about five houses down the road from the O'Quory family. And we just wanted to come tonight to just express how wonderful of neighbors the O'Quory family is. And that I feel someone needs to be here to say that. And our experience, we moved to this neighborhood 10 years ago. And we walk our dogs every day. Our kids are now high school age, but when we moved into this neighborhood, our kids were all that small. And whenever we see Charles and his family, we get warmth, we get graciousness, we get genuine caring about us as neighbors, which, I love our neighborhood, but it's, we see it the most from Charles and his family. So I wanted to just be here and say that on their behalf. Similarly to, another reason is, sorry, just used the wrong word. Our family moved to this neighborhood and we had, we have three kids. And when we moved here, we owned a bungalow, which was small. So we've experienced a lot of the same growing pains that Charles just mentioned of. The kids get bigger and the house doesn't get any bigger. So we did a sizable remodeling on 36 Cox Street about four or five years ago. And it was very well-received by our neighborhood without any opposition. And I think Charles, through what he's trying to achieve today, deserves the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there someone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Melissa DeJardin, and I live at 30 Burgess Street, which is directly across from Charles. My boyfriend lives with me, Adam Karen. I live there, my family live there, so I was born and raised there. And we just want to show support for Charles and his family. They've been nothing but amazing. And they were really there for me when my dad passed away. And they're just an amazing family. And I personally don't think that it would make a difference. I think it would help... I think it would help the neighborhood, if anything, with the property value. And I can look out my window and directly see his whole house, and I, I'm not worried about the optics at all or what it would look like, and I think him and his family deserve this. And then my boyfriend wants to talk to me.
Sharing similar sentiment, and thank you for your time. I believe, and unfortunately don't have any.
Excuse me, can you just state your name and address?
Apologies. Adam Karen, also at 30 Burgess Street, which is adjacent to Cock Street. We have a triangular lot, so we're sort of on both. I believe that in similar situations in the neighborhood, we have equal distance or very similar distance that's been granted in other cases, maybe previously in, in the past. Thinking with some of our direct neighbors feels in similar proximity. I am of the mindset as well that an increase in the optics and property value is of overall benefit for the entire neighborhood, and I think that a two-car garage and the square footage that we would see from this would move that to a pretty consistent setup, as is shared among other neighbors in, in the neighborhood. So, expressing my support for that and sharing similar sentiment is all before me.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Please, one at a time, come up, state your name and address for the record. You can pull that mic down so you can speak into it easier.
My name is Sharon St. Ange, and I live at 44 Cock Street. We are the Butters, who will be most affected by the Okories if they are allowed to encroach any distance into the required 10-foot setback. The entire time, 49 years, that we have lived in our home, the garage and driveway at number 46 has been in the opposite side of their home, nowhere near our property. The two-car garage that they are proposing, as well as a large driveway, would be only six feet from our property. The Okories currently have four vehicles in use at their home, and when the two older children are home from college, there could be as many as six vehicles. Because Mr. Okory, Okory blatantly disregarded a police no trespassing order and took down three massive trees that were in between our boundaries, we no longer have any privacy border or no noise buffer between the two properties, just bare naked land. We have chosen to stay in the neighborhood for 49 years because we have always had wonderful, respectful neighbors. That being said, Mr. Okory changed all that when he decided he wanted to add a garage and a second story to his existing home. Because Mr. Okory chose not to have his property surveyed, prior to drawing up his plans, he has caused a myriad of problems that could have all been avoided had he done so. Mr. Okory has repeatedly tried to circumvent the rules and regulations to his advantage. The fact that Mr. Okory's initial application was not truthful should require a new permit. It is also long past 180 days from the issue date of the August 19th, 2022 date, which should make it no longer viable. The Okory's permit was based on the premise that he had sufficient land, did not need a variance, and knew where his boundaries are, none of which are true. The fact that the house was built prior to 1978 and could contain hazardous material is a question to which he checked no. We also asked that the Okory's request for a minor encroachment be denied, and that he redesigned his plan to a smaller garage to stay within the required setback buffer.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Is there someone, anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
My name is Ed St. Ange. I live at 44 Cock Street. As my wife said, had he had a survey done, a lot of this would have been eliminated. The first thing we got from the Okories was a registered letter that we had to sign for, and then it were three aerial views of city plans, I take it. Our lot was changed from 95 across the front to 89.6 in all three of them. Our deed clearly says 95. His deed, and I think the next four houses all say 95. Why this was changed to 89.6 is beyond me. I know he needed five feet, but... A lot of calculations have gone into this. There's a lot. We've got 31.6 between his house and our property line. We've got 26.7. We've got 27 point, we've got five different amounts. To this day, I don't know what the measurement is. He's had a couple surveys, we had a survey, but they're all different. I don't know, I don't know where we stand on this. Somehow, we have to know the distance from his garage to our property line, which has been surveyed. He used a survey that I, we hired Maynard and Palquet to do a survey. He took a copy of that survey, put his own numbers in, and submitted it to you guys. He had the audacity to do that. Why would he do that? I just, I just don't understand. The first time I met, well, not the first, the first time in this instance, he come over and wanted to know if he could trim a few of the branches on my trees, 'cause he's gonna put a garage in. I said, "You can trim some, just don't go too high. I don't want you to kill them." Couple days later, he comes over, he says he's got two estimates to take the trees down. I said, "Charles, I told you, they're my trees, they're not going anywhere. I like them, they're staying." He thought they were his trees. I said, "Well, have a survey done, are they your trees? Take them down." He complained about my fence being his property. I said, "I'd gladly move the fence." When we put the fence up 22 years ago, we went by a city plan that said we had 90, 100 feet across the front, 95 on each side. It was wrong. It was actually 95 in the front and 100 on. We didn't know that. We were putting the fence up, we did what we're supposed to do, went to City Hall and got that plan. It was incorrect. If the fence is on his property, I'd gladly take it down and move it. Can't do it in December, obviously. Then, I think two days after that, he come over threatening me that he is taking the trees down, they're his, and he's gonna bulldoze down my fence. I didn't take too kindly to that. I visited the police station a couple days later and made a complaint. I know an officer Olsen did talk to him and told him to stay off my property, or he could be arrested for trespassing. She also said, "Do not touch his property, 'cause it could be criminal intent," whatever reason. Three days later, he has a tree company there, the day after Christmas, taking the trees down. I went out and I talked to the guy that's taking the trees. I said, "Before you start, we have a suit going on, this is property dispute here, it's going through the courts now." And he said, "Well, if that's the case, I'm gonna pack up and get the hell out of here." I went back in, we're sitting down having breakfast, I hear the saws going again, I guess Charles are going out. Showed him these aerial views. Some of the aerial views that Charles supplied for us, it goes right to his house. You can't take, you gotta have a right survey, you gotta know where your lines are. Anyways, they started, I called the police, they came. By the time they got there, two of the trees, one was completely stripped, the other was all, almost all the way up. So, I said, "Take them down." I mean, I'm not gonna look at that for six months. We'll deal with that after. But he was on my property, helping, take down the trees, picking up branches. I called, when the cops came, I went out and I told them, "Why is he on my property? He's on a log down there, no trespass."
Excuse me, Mr. St. Ange, you have about 50 seconds left.
Thank you. And they talked to him, and he finally got off my property. I, I guess that's it. I'm not gonna have enough time to finish it anyways. I'll take any questions?
Mr. Courier, I saw your hand first.
So, we recently got an applica, or not, a plot survey from Hayner Swanson for 46 Cock Street, and there's been the, what I would call the existing, well, maybe it's not, it's February 13th, 2023, from Maynard and Palquet for your property. Is that, does that ring a bell? So, did you have that one done as, when this issue came up? Because it's just, you know, a few months old.
We, my lawyer advised us to get the property survey, we did.
Okay. And then the one thing I don't see is from the right edge of your garage to the property line, it doesn't say how far it is on this here, or maybe I'm missing it. But, so I guess I was a little, you know, with all that's going on, I guess I would have thought that there'd be a dimension for what your, how far the property line is from your right side of the house. Is that, but I don't, I don't think it's stated on here, maybe somebody sees it.
My fence is on the property at the front by two feet, in the rear by four feet. And we assumed it was after we got that plan from the city the second time.
Okay.
And, but when he come over that day screaming and yelling, he said, "You're seven and a half feet into my property." I said, "Charles, why not seven and a half feet in your property?" At most, a foot or two.
Okay.
The other, the last survey he had done was, I forget who it was, but there's no dimension from the garage to our property line. There's dimensions everywhere else on there, bushes and whatever, but there's no dimension. It just says the garage is 21, and it says proposed 6'4" or something. There's no definite dimension.
Well, I tell you, just setting your Maynard and Palquet next to his Hayner Swanson, to me, it looks like the property lines are right in sync. I'm just saying it looks to me, but, okay. My question's been answered. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, Mr. St. Ange, earlier, apparently your, your attorney had suggested that because that fence had been there for so long, that, I forget what the exact term is, I always call it adverse possession, but sometimes when, when a presumed property line has been there for many years, then you can legally apply to make it the real property line, but apparently decided not to do that.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you say.
In the earlier message from your lawyer, not for this meeting, but for the previous meeting, it said that you were claiming that the fence was legally your property line because it had been there for more than 20 years.
Yes.
And, but now what I hear is you've agreed to move the fence to your...
Adverse possession is a thing to take apart. I don't want the property, it is property. I just want peace and harmony. Didn't make more than 20 years. And I'd gladly move the fence, but anytime, we have bushes in there, we have blueberries, offensive flowers, everything we have to move, you can't move when we're not close.
Mr. St. Ange, can you please get closer to the mic? They're recording this.
Sorry, I was trying to hear him better.
Okay. So, but you, I, I understand that you, you've, you've now decided that you're going to move the fence. Okay.
Definitely gonna move the fence.
Yep.
We've already talked to the fence company, we're gonna pick out a flavor, color, whatever you wanna call it.
All right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I will, I needed to ask the board if there are questions.
For him.
For him, correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. St. Ange.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you can pull the mic down to you, or you can remove it completely.
My name is Ellen Stromsgholz. I live at 48 Cock Street, directly next door to 46 Cock Street where the Okories live. I actually grew up in that house. My parents bought it right when it was built, and I was away for several decades. My dad was kind of failing after my mother died, and I moved back. And I have bought the property after my father died. So all of the houses in the neighborhood are just kind of all of the same sort of a 60's tract house sort of design, or just a few different designs, but all built by the same builder right around the same time. To me, I know that Charles Okry had said that he thought this fit in the neighborhood. I guess I disagree. I think it's a very different design. I think it looks nice, but it doesn't really go, and I also think...
Can you please hold the mic closer? Thank you.
I think I said that I thought the design looked nice, but I don't really think it fits the neighborhood, and I also think it would be too big for the lot. Right now, my house is the only one that has two stories. All the other houses are a split level or a one-story ranch, except for further down the street where there's some raised entry, which is sort of like a split level. So this would be, from what I understand by the drawing, a full two-story house. I'm not quite sure. I also had a question about the fence. It wasn't clear to me when Mr. St. Ange was talking where the fence is. Is it on the property line or not? That's why I wanted to ask a question. So maybe somebody can discuss that again. I'm still kind of confused. I only knew about, I knew that there was, I got something in the mail from the city about a variance for a two-car garage, but it said nothing about a whole model redesign. So I was kind of surprised by that. I only found out about it yesterday. And only by having just like a little over 24 hours to look at all the plans, I discovered the same things that Mr. St. Ange pointed out, that there were things changed on surveys that belonged to Mr. St. Ange that he had paid for. I think that's what I understand. The things that he mentioned about changing things on that plan without the preparer's permission, making it seem like it was his. I also noticed the thing about the, the lead paint, which I was told is not a zoning board issue, but the house was definitely built before 78. It's built in the early 60's, and I know that it had lead paint. 'Cause I grew, grew up in that neighborhood, I had childhood friends. You know, you saw the inside of their house, you kind of compare houses, and I knew that they were painted. Our house was a model house, but it had paper, but that was the exception. I haven't noticed, I think like the two people who agreed, I haven't noticed other people adding additions beyond like a deck or a garage, and I haven't noticed anything that would be so close. So I, I definitely sighed. I sympathize. I sympathize with, I, the St. Anges mostly, although I do understand the plight of the Okories, having a house that would be too small. But, you know, when there's so many other people involved, is it really fair for that person to, you know, just get the approval for that reason?
You have about 45 seconds left.
Okay. So, this house has been in my family for over 60 years. Part, you know, partially owned by my parents, partially owned by me for just the last few It's always been the only two-story house. It doesn't have anybody's windows looking directly in. This would change all that. Right now, the house has a garage facing my house with no windows, so there's more privacy. This addition would have put windows on that side, plus a deck on the back. So I would lose my privacy in my house. So, I would lose my privacy in my house from inside the house and on the deck. Plus, I just don't think, I also think it sets an unfair precedent to go over the line.
Your time is, that's the timer going off.
Okay, all right. I just think it would be too crammed in.
Mr. Carrier, just one moment, Mr. Stromswald.
I guess I don't really have a question. I just wanted to speak to some of your questions. And what we have is, I'm gonna call it the Saint Ange survey and the Okari survey. And side by side, they look where the property line is. They look right in concert. So, I wanted to address your question. Both of those show the existing Saint Ange fence over the line on the Okari property. Looks like two feet, six inches in the front and four feet, six inches in the back.
But are those, but those are both provided by the Okarries, right?
No.
No?
Yeah, so, the fence, I didn't understand that last question, but that the fence by both surveys is a little bit on the Okari property. And then, the other point I just wanted to point out is, the reason we're here tonight is strictly the garage in the 10-foot side yard setback, that the two-story proposed addition, anybody in this zone could do that by right, anybody on Cox Street. And that's, we're not here to adjudicate on that. They can do that by right. We're here only for the, for the encroachment into closer than 10 feet on the left side yard setback. So, I just wanted to clarify that if, because you were asking.
Um, well, I, I don't know what the precedent is. I just know how it is going to affect me. In my opinion, it would reduce property value for my house and Mr. Saint Ange's to be so squished in. You know, people like privacy when they're looking at a house. You know, maybe that's not the exact point, but I feel like it should, it deserves some weight.
I don't disagree. Privacy is nice. I enjoy my backyard.
And also, I looked, also, I just had a, just a thought, well, a few thoughts, like I kind of agree.
Excuse me.
Can't say anymore?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak with questions, comments, or concerns about this application? This is, you have, um-
I'm at, I'm at 30 Burgess Street, and I'll be very brief here, just-
But you, you can't come back up?
Oh, my apologies.
He's already, you've already been up to speak.
No worries. Thank you.
Sorry, sir. We're just following the rules.
Yeah. It's, we have rules, too.
I appreciate you appearing to us.
Thank you. So do we. Seeing, is there anyone on Zoom with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, now, Mr. Okari, you've heard from the people who have comments. You have five minutes to address their comments. And then, after Mr. Okari speaks, one and only one person who spoke in opposition has the ability to come up and speak.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are there letters that we received that were-
Yes, but from everybody who has already spoken.
They, they're all from people who have spoken?
Yes, except for the attorney, and I was gonna ask Mr. Falk about that. This one letter. Every other letter we have is from the Saint Anges and from Mrs., it's Ellen.
You should identify the attorney that did write a letter in opposition. And if you wanna paraphrase what he said, I mean, a lot of this has already been spoken to already by the Saint Anges, so.
Exactly. I just wanna read this into the record first, Mr. Okari, so that you, I mean, I'm not gonna read the whole letter because we would be here for half an hour. But he, this is from Welles White and Fontaine. And it is signed by Attorney Israel Padrea. And the summation of their letter speaks to the questions, comments, and concerns, and opposition of Mr. and Mrs. Saint Ange. And it's Ellen, and I don't wanna say her name wrong. So, please bear with me. Stromswald, I hope I got that correct. He represents the Saint Anges, and he goes on to speak about the legality, the trees, the fence, and the neighbors' opposition.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Factually, before now, if you asked me about my neighbors, I would have told you that I have the best neighbors in the world. Why I am being opposed? Why any effort is being made to impede on my progress? Not just me and my family is beyond me.
But, Mr. Okari, can you respond to their concerns?
Okay. The concern of privacy, I believe first of why we're here is to make a request for a minor encroachment, which is typical. I'm not even going up to six feet. I don't have a four-foot encroachment. It's three feet, seven inches. That's all we are here for. Now, for my neighbors, I'll just say, I don't know, I don't have any grounds with them. My neighbor called the cops to come and arrest me. The cop came, and I'll, the cop looked at me and said, "Charles, I'm sorry that this is happening. The only way you can get this resolved is to go to court. Go to court and get this straightened out." I told him, "Thank you." He left. I went inside my house, and said to myself, "How will they, how will the next person take it?" When they hear that Charles, that is always trying to be peaceful, and tell the next person not to fight, they take his neighbor to court. I refused to go to court. I've been taking punches from my neighbors. I don't know why. The, oh, privacy, I don't see a privacy issue in this. Two stories, one story, the house is not the biggest, it's not going to be the biggest house on Cox Street. It's just a typical house. I just used my skill to enhance it. I could have just built a box and called it a day. But I tried to just enhance the aesthetics. That's all. I don't know how to play with them to let this be. I don't know. I honestly don't know. I just hope they don't fail, or they don't have anything against me. I'm ready to apologize to them if I've wronged them, just to let this proceed. Everybody does it. Everybody. It's not unusual. That's all. I'm pleading with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, one person from the three who spoke may come up. And again, please state your name and address for the record. You can only respond to exactly what the issue was that Mr. Okari spoke to. We can't hear new information, or we don't want you to go back over what you've already stated. Just please refer your comments exactly to the issues you had and the issues Mr. Okari addressed.
I don't understand what Mr. Okari is, is speaking of, that we would have had him arrested. Mr. Okari, his actions made it hard for us. We tried to, he threatened to bulldoze down our fence and said if, if, you know, it wasn't moved, that was what was gonna happen. And then, he took down the trees that he threatened to take down, which for us was, that's why the police were called. And the police officer talked to him after he threatened to bulldoze down the fence and just told him that threatening anyone is criminal, or damaging anyone's property is criminal. He advised her to tell us to take him to court. So, that's where it ended up. We had no choice. The police told us they can do nothing. It's a civil matter. When you're eating breakfast and your trees are coming down, and you're in tears because, what do you do? Well, you have no way to stop it. So, I mean, I've been extremely emotional. I cried for a month. And my kid said, "Ma, you can't go too bad. You can't speak. Let your lawyer speak." Today, it has cost us $12,000 because of Mr. Okari. And he's wondering why we're proposing this? He's going to be six feet. This garage is going to be six feet from our boundary. We tried to keep the tree stumps for the trees in place because everybody told us, "You can get money. You can get money. You can, he can reimburse you." It will never bring back our trees, never. And it's devastating. We have no privacy. We're extremely private people. And we work in our yard. We don't take trips. That's what we do. And it's like, this has been extremely hard. And he can't understand. He wants more room for his children. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that. But we did not put our fence there deliberately to antagonize him. We put it up because our plot plan said we had 100 feet. We put it up thinking we had two feet on each side. The plot plan years ago, as you well know, they were wrong. And when we went to the city and showed them that he had reduced our property to, from 95 down to 89.6, which was like, why? And they told us, "Well, he already had his, his permit. He already had, he'd had enough land. He had enough." And it, I was like dumbfounded. It's like, well, how? There's, there's no room there. And then, the surveys were like, this survey said this, this survey said that. This, the surveys were all over the place. The numbers were all over the place. Our fence was 10 feet, eight feet, six feet over. And it's like, you know, we, you know, knew when we picked up the plan that the city put out in 2019. We picked one up in 2020, and we realized at that time, it's like, oh, my God. Our fence has gotta be over one way or the other. We were hoping that it wasn't much on either side, but we were almost ready to replace it anyway. And for somebody to cross a line and threaten to bulldoze down your fence and take down trees that you can never replace in your lifetime, these trees were massive. And it was our entire privacy border, which we have nothing there now. It's, it's bare. And we, I walk outside, I look down, because if I look up, I cry. And I'm sorry, but, but this is what it's done to us. And I said, "For myself, my kids are worried, because I went through four years of cancer treatment and nearly died in 2016, and this has been extremely hard for me." That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mrs. Saint Ange.
I apologize.
No. No apologies necessary. I do want to amend a record. I was going back over all the letters because Mr. Lionell stated that. I thought I had taken them all because I have a pile of them. But, and Elizabeth Gilardis at 42 Cox Street also sent a letter referencing the garage and the same issues. But I just did want it absolutely referred into the record. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier?
I'm first.
Yep. You do that.
I guess, I, I set aside, or try to set aside, I say a couple of things. You know, just to clarify, I think the board is well aware of this. But we're hearing this case tonight because of a garage, proposed garage side yard setback. And just, I'm sure the board is aware of this, but maybe more for the audience that the Okarries have the right to build a second story and expand their house by right. You know, you could just walk in and get a permit. I think that's already good to go. It's just the garage we're looking at in consideration tonight. And I wanted to reiterate that I think these two plot plans are in alignment where the property line is. And I, so I feel that the request that's before us tonight is accurate to the property line. All that being said, I, I, as Mr. Lionell alluded to, I, I feel by law, we need to set aside the, the financial impact aspect of this and get back to the hardship on the property. And I'm struggling with that because these are all very similar properties. And I struggle with a uniqueness to this. The criteria for a special exception that I'm struggling with is, will it be out of character with the neighborhood? I mean, we've, I, we've heard testimony both ways, but I, given the history, I feel that this encroachment would be out of character with the neighborhood. I'm struggling with it. I'm on the fence. But I'm, at this point, I'm not inclined to support it for that situation, and that's where I'm at. And I'm looking forward to hearing five other opinions, four other opinions.
Mr. Neely.
This is, this is heartbreaking to listen to the testimony on both sides because I, I truly believe everybody thinks they're in the right on this. And, and I appreciate Mr. Carrier kind of setting us straight here of what we need to be looking at. I, I believe this house plan is beautiful. I think this will, will bring quite a bit to the neighborhood. But really, what we're talking about here is, is the encroachment towards the Saint Ange's house. And in my short time on the board, I have not seen any type of pushback from any neighbors when folks have looked for exceptions of just a few feet. This is the first time I've seen the vociferous pushback on this. And I need to look at the rights of the Saint Anges as well. You know, they, they have, have lost their privacy with the trees, which were in between. And quite frankly, I haven't looked at those pictures. Those were beautiful trees that really did a great job separating out those, those two houses. I'm really struggling with this, that, that, you know, the addition of a garage really is not critical to the nature of what the Okarries are trying to do. You know, they, they've testified. They're, they're looking to increase the size of the house. That's great. Getting more room for the kids, that's great. We can, we can check all those boxes. But a two-car garage seems, seems like if, if it's going to infringe on the Saint Ange's so, that, that, I cannot be in support of that. I feel like it brings it a little too close to the Saint Ange's property. And they have, they have the right to, to have a certain amount of distance between their house and the Okari's house. You know, this was really a tough one, but I, I am not in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Again, as spoken before, I am sensitive to all those butters that spoke in favor and against. I simply am looking at this as an application for a minor encroachment. This is not a variance. This is a special exception for a minor encroachment for a garage. Again, everything else that has, has surrounded this, I mean, we get a full packet. Again, these are issues that were dealt with civilly, and I have to, in this case, I have to put that aside, because I, and again, sensitive to what's going on, but I believe in this case, for this application, that, to me, does not, unfortunately, may not be well, well received, but I don't believe it has any bearing in my opinion to this case. Again, it doesn't mean I'm not sensitive to what has been spoken to, and, and what's happened. I think all the issues, the fence, the trees, and all that, that's a civil matter. I'm looking this as strictly a request for a minor encroachment for a two-car garage. Furthermore, again, we, we look at projects, requests all over the city of Nashua, and we can certainly sit here for hours talking about similar properties, some of that, properties that have less of, less side setbacks and all that. If I was to look at this, and the neighboring house that would be most effective is literally, has predated before zoning, and was literally, you know, two feet from the property line, to me, that's an effect, but, but the abutting property, in my mind, the issue doesn't fall for me, because it's a garage and a driveway. So it's, again, driveway against driveway. So I don't feel, for me, that that is really anything that I would consider. Again, I, I, to me, it's just simply the minor encroachment of the three feet, seven inches, it's a less of a buyer to hit, I, I think that all the criteria are fulfilled. So at this point, I, I'm going to fully support the application as it stands.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Indeed, this is a request for a minor, exception to a minor encroachment. And we've had cases before where people wanted to extend or build a garage into the side yard setback, and we look at the, the shape of the property, where the house is on the property, but we also look at what the neighbors think, and we take that into account. If I was just looking at this as the minor encroachment and nothing else, I might be inclined to support it. What bothers me is what happened, what's been happening over the last several months, the antagonism that I believe, that I believe is created by the Okories against their neighbors. You know, I kind of, all of the different measurements and, and the, and the plans submitted is, is annoying, but we now have a monumented survey with the correct dimensions, so that I kind of put aside. I note that the St. Ange's have a two-car garage, and that the Okories' proposed garage and driveway would be adjacent to their garage. I am definitely disturbed that the Okories took down those trees along the border. And that affects my thinking on this. Right, I, I've not, I haven't decided one way or the other yet, but I, I'm literally on the fence, wherever that fence happens to be, about this.
Thank you. I think, myself, like the rest of you, I'm on the fence. However, I have to, I have to look at what we're here to look at. We can't look honestly and technically at the civil issues that have occurred with the neighbors, or with the trees taken down, though if I had my druthers, I would wish that the Okories would purchase trees that were full grown, or at, at least not young trees, and replace the trees. But that's a personal preference, that's, you know, how I would see some form of restitution for the trees. Looking at this as an issue of a minor encroachment, two-car garage, two-car garage for neighbors, it, it's not out of line, it's not out of character. We heard about putting up a second floor, that's the Okories' right. They don't need to come here to do that. So when anyone speaks about privacy, that in all likelihood is going to be lost regardless of the decision that's made here tonight. So, in looking at this, just based on the facts that we're supposed to look at, with our tunnel vision and not peripheral vision, I look at a minor encroachment to build a two-car garage, and three feet is a minor encroachment, and so I am in support of this Do we need more discussion? Would someone?
Just maybe a little more discussion for me?
Sure.
Just.
Mr. Courier.
I, I wanted to emphasize that with the plan before us, I think the Okories can accomplish everything they want for living space with the house that they've proposed. Something I, I'm still struggling with on the garage is, I think they can fully accomplish a two-car garage and not go into the encroachment while there's a window in the basement. I don't, you know, I, I'm not a builder, but you could just build the garage longer and accomplish that. So I, I'm still finding myself not in support of this application, and that the Okories can accomplish, I think, everything they want, I just wanted to throw that out. So I'm, I'm, I'm still on that side of the fence.
Excuse me, Mr. Lionel.
I agree with Mr. Courier that, you know, there are other solutions, but this is not an area variance application, where that's one of the criteria. So, I, I absolutely agree that, that there, there could be other solutions, but that's not what's before us. And unlike an area variance, where we say, you know, special conditions of the property, no other method possibly, reasonably possible, that's not one of the points of law to be met here. So, I think, well, no, I, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Just like to follow up again. Again, just to reiterate, I, you know, missed Lionel about a few good points. Again, for myself to add to it, I am recognizing that there are two, two-car garages in the neighborhood. That is something that we hear from other wardens that are here, that, you know, it's a, it's a customary thing now to have a two-car garage. And, you know, just going back to the, to the issues that have been going around surrounding this, this, this application, it's very difficult sometimes, because we, we do have some cases where we have contentious, and we have butters, whether it's, it's residential, commercial, whatever, we've heard all kinds of things. And, and again, I think it's very difficult to, to do this, this is not an easy board sometimes to volunteer for. And again, it's not a personal thing, but I truly believe that, you know, in this case here, the trees, all those issues, is really part of a civil matter. And, again, we don't necessarily, may not necessarily have all the information, not that that, to me, is something that makes my decision, but there may be other things that have happened since then, that we don't have information on. Okay, so, so I'm looking again at this case, what is being applied for. If our decision, for some reason, we can make these decisions, if there's something that happens civilly, this doesn't negate what we're doing. Again, I'm just trying to say that, that there could be other things that have happened that have not been brought up for whatever reasons. And, and again, whether they be important to any of us to hear, to make a decision, but for myself, again, I have to try to remove that, and get what our, our purview is, and look at what the, what, what we have to follow here. And I don't see anything here that could lead us, only you need to make a decision based on civil issues that are going on among us butters at this point. So that's, again, my position, so I remain in the same position I am.
Thank you. And I think we also have to remember that while we had a butters come to speak in opposition, we also had a butters come to speak in support. So, it just makes the decision tougher, and unfortunately, we have to pull the emotion out, because this is very emotional. And I think I sympathize and I empathize with every person who spoke. I could understand the logic behind their comments, and the rationale and reasoning. However, I can't look at it through that lens. I have to just look at it through the lens we are handed. And we are handed a special exception, a minor encroachment, and does it meet the, the five points of law? And I, like Mr. Boucher, think it does.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. And we'll see where we go.
I'll make a motion to approve the special exception for, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Yojima C. and Charles Okori, of 46 Cox Street, Sheet 137A, Law 3, requesting special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Section E, Subsection 3A, for a minor encroachment to encroach a maximum of four feet into the 10-foot required side yard setback to construct and attach 21-foot by 22-foot two-car garage, it's in the area zone, Ward 9. It is listed in the table of uses, it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. We find all special regulations are fulfilled, it will not impair the integrity or be out of character to the neighborhood, it would be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. With that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
And I will second that motion. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor of the motion.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes not in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes not in favor.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I vote in favor. That is, motion fails.
Yep, we need a new motion.
We need a new motion. Mr. Courier.
I'll make a motion on behalf of the Okories of 46 Cox Street, I could forego reading the same case, or I guess I'll read it in, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, 190-16, Paragraph E, 3A, for a minor encroachment to encroach a maximum of four feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback. I, the motion, I feel this is listed in the table of uses, I believe this would not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I believe it will not unload, overload public water drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. I don't think there's any special regulations, but if there are, I think they're fulfilled. But I find that this minor encroachment would be out of character with the neighborhood. I don't think it'll be detrimental to health, moral, or welfare of the residents, but I think it'll be out of character, I, with the consistency of the neighborhood, and I'll leave it at that.
Do I have a second?
What, what was the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion to deny the special exception.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Courier, just on your motion, it will, I don't know if you said it, maybe I missed it, will not impair integrity, I don't know if you missed that one.
I, I said, it will, I'm sorry if I, if I screwed that up, I said it will impair the integrity.
That's all I missed.
And be out of character with the neighborhood.
But will not be detrimental.
To the health, moral of our.
It will not.
Will not be.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
And myself, Maryelle McKay, I vote not in favor of the motion to deny, but the motion succeeds three to two. Mr. and Mrs. Okori, your motion for a special exception has been denied. Should you have any questions, I would ask that you please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Borrier in the Planning Department. And as we've stated earlier, any member of the public may appeal any decision made by this board, and they have 30 days with which to do so. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I would suggest if you did have any questions, any concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Borrier for their assistance. Thank you. Is the board okay, or do you want to take a two-minute break?
Short break, please.
Thank you. The board will be in recess for five minutes. The board will be in recess for five minutes.
I'm gonna have to talk to Auntie.
I'm just cracked that.
Be swayed by.
Thanks to.
Wow, what's his face? He's a younger guy.
Yeah, disregard.
Blanking on his name.
And just about everything made up of this. If this had come just like this, with the copper, things in place, and if there wasn't widespread objection.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
But it's hard for me to go against vociferous opposition, especially on the applicant. It's a terrible hassle.
They've been there forever, and they can expect a certain certainty. At the end of the day, it's only a two-car garage, and maybe a one-car garage. Great. And, you know, taking down the tree.
I knew. That was gonna be like, I used to say to my daughter. I've been asking. Why, I don't know. It's a tough one. We can't have. I'm sure I really hurt you. Oh, here's Mr. Boucher.
No problem.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, and I would ask people, if you have conversations you would like to have, could you please take them outside of the auditorium? Thank you very much. We will now proceed with the next case. If someone is here for the case on Ford Nelson, that case has been withdrawn. Our next case is Alyssa A. and Michael St. Albin, owners, eighteen Bedford Street, Sheet E, Lot 308, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach nineteen feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach fifteen-by-twenty-six one-story addition to rear of existing house. This is in the R9 Zone in Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present this case? Please step forward, sir, and state your name and address for the record, and then you have up to fifteen minutes with which to present your case.
I'm Michael St. Albin, owner of eighteen Bedford Street. Not really sure what to say, but we're just, we're looking, sorry.
The floor's yours, sir. You can say what you like about why you want to do what you want to do.
So essentially, we've lived in the house for ten years now. We've had two kids. We're quickly outgrowing the house. We love the neighborhood, though. We would like to just build this addition to allow more size in the house for our growing family. This'll give us an additional, a larger bedroom, which will allow us to give our children larger bedrooms in turn. And it'll also allow us to add a second bathroom in the existing house.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Falk.
Hi, just a question, was there a thought of maybe building on the side of your house? Or what was the rationale, I should ask, for building in the back versus, say, the side of the house? You know, perhaps there's a thought for that, it just, you know, the house and the property. I don't. If you could just tell me how that went down, I'm curious of your logic on that.
So the current layout of the house has a carport on the side of the house, which then leads to our yard, which is pitched pretty rapidly. It would have, we found that if we went off the back when it came to excavation and cost, and it was the most cost-effective option for us with what, the way our property is laid out.
I noticed that, you know, you state it's a one-story application, one-story proposed addition, you know, because it's kind of hard to see in the back, but I, I guess I'm guessing a little that maybe a one-story wouldn't, you know, kind of impede any of your abutters or.
No, no, there's no, so the way that, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but where basically Bedford Street sits just off Broad Street, so there's houses that sit on Broad Street, and we're a house directly behind the houses that are on Broad Street. The way that the lot is laid out, our house is actually like, probably fifty feet from the direct abutter. There, the houses are opposing sides of the yards. We're not even remotely close to any abutting property.
Yeah, I mean, it, it looks like your parcel is, is a little bit smaller than the average one around, and the one that you're backing up to is particularly large, and I think that goes to what you're saying, that there's a, maybe an unusually large stretch of land relatively to the other properties between the back of yours and the back of your backyard of butter.
Unfortunately, the way that our house was originally designed, it's a ranch, but it goes front to back rather than side to side. So all of our yard is to the left of our house. So if we, that was another reason why we chose to go back, because if we went to the side, we would lose a lot of our yard. Everyone else in our area, their ranches go side to side like a normal ranch, so their yard is all behind their house. We unfortunately don't have that option.
All right, thank you, answered my question.
Thank you. Does anyone have any, oh, Mr. Neely.
Just to follow up on, on what Mr. Courier was saying, I think, you know, what, what I'm looking at is your house is, is situated in, in a way that's different than your neighbors'. And it looks to me like you were already into the, to the rear setback by a couple feet.
Yeah, four feet.
So here we are again, talking about adding more onto it. If this fails tonight, it's certainly, certainly not saying that it's gonna fail, but the question is, do you have the ability to build this addition off of the side, where the, where the deck is or the carport is? Because you have a ton of, you have a ton of space over there. I know you got a bunch of stuff going on, but it certainly is well within your minds there.
We would have to find out if, one, we could, because if we went onto the carport side, I would have to see if we can even build onto that slab, because I was told it wasn't thick enough by our contractor. So that would incur more cost to us. We'd have to have it excavated and removed, because the proposed plans is a post and beam structure. That's what we had engineered. It's going on sonotubes, not a full foundation. Could we go that way? I'm assuming we could probably have the plans re-engineered. This was just the best option for us, and we felt that it would carry the same characteristics of the neighborhood as well, because it makes the ranch longer rather than making it wider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? And is there no one on Zoom? Kate, anyone on Zoom?
There are, but they're not raising their hands.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely.
So I, I would have been interested to hear if, if the folks who live at 265 Broad Street had, had showed up here to talk either in support or in opposition, because realistically, you know, it's, it's infringing towards their land. I think it is important to note that this house, and as the applicant said, is, it's kind of facing north-south rather than east-west, like, like many of his neighbors. You know, we're, we're not gonna take cost into consideration, as we talked about in the last case, but quite frankly, I'm in support of this application. I think they're, they're trying to add some much-needed space because of the way the 265 Broad Street is, is a large lot, and it houses towards the front. I, I don't think there's any, any negative or any adverse effect to the, to the value there. In fact, it's probably gonna increase the property value of some of the surrounding houses there, so I am in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application, again, specifically because of the, the unique positioning of the, of the home and its orientation to the lot. And again, as spoken by Mr. Neely, I don't believe that this encroaching will affect the rear of butter. And I always take the, so when there's an abutter, and we, we, if I had a question about it, and if they're not here, they don't speak, or there's not a letter, in, in support or not, my assumption is always, there's no problem to it, there's no issues with it. So I take that silence as, as an affirmation that, that basically, you know, it's fine. And, and again, I think because that lot's a lodge, if you're gonna look back there, if you don't know it's a thirty-foot setback, you would say, that's just a house normally put there. I don't think there's gonna be a problem. So again, I'm gonna support the application as it is.
Thank you. Mr. Lionell.
Yeah, committee, initially, one looks at this, and that's, that's quite a big ask, as we say, in terms of the rear yard setback. But if you look at where this property is and where the house for 265 Broad Street is, it's basically the opposite corner of this large lot. And so I, there really would not be any impingement. And again, as Mr. Neely said, we don't have any testimony from neighbors, one way or the other, so I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Like Mr. Lionell said, looking at this, I felt, wow, this is a big ask, and I was thinking like, geez, they, this square footage could be accomplished with no ask, but it is a unique property. I was find relief in the, the one story, because when, I, I, I'm always sensitive to abutters' concerns, and I also put myself in a butters' position and think, well, would, would that bother me? And my sense is, if it was like a two-story request that I was an abutter, I think it would, it would be so close, but my sense was if it's one story, you, you know, you might not even know it's there. So if there was opposition, I'd be very sensitive to it, but like Mr. Boucher says, I take silence as it's not a concern for the abutters, and I don't want to overexert my opinion as to whether it would bother me. So with that, I find support for this application.
Thank you. I too am in support of the application. I think they did their due diligence, and the topography, the distance between the home behind and their home, and the silence, which to me is acquiescence, speaks volumes. And so I too am in support of this application. Would somebody care to make, oh, thank you, Mr. Courier.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Alyssa and Michael St. Albin, eighteen Bedford Street. The request is a variance for Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to, quote, encroach nineteen feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach fifteen-by-twenty-six one-story addition to the rear of the existing house. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, this board has identified the special conditions in the application, that the house, the ranch house is set essentially sideways to the street, and so it's reasonable to add on to the side of the house. The board also finds that this property depth is, is, is unique and smaller on the street, and that the, the abutting backyard property is, is larger than the other properties. And so even though this is a, a large ask into the, the required rear yard setback of this property, it, it's still a, a, a pretty long distance to the backyard property. With that special condition, I think the board finds that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board finds it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, and it's not contrary to public interest, and the substantial justice is served. So again, I make a motion to approve this variance as applied.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionell. Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionell, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionell votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Congratulations, Mr. St. Albin, you have, your variance has been granted. As we've stated earlier, any decision made by this board, any member of the public has the option to appeal. They have thirty days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, concerns, comments, please either re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Department, and they will help you. Again, thank you for your presentation, and good luck with your project. East Dunstable Properties LLC owner, John Forsier, applicant, seven East Dunstable Road, Sheet 109, Lot 76, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-17E1, to exceed maximum driveway width, twenty-four feet permitted, thirty-six feet proposed, to construct one twenty-four-foot wide driveway on Burnett Street and one twelve-foot wide driveway on East Dunstable Road. This is in the RA Zone in Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present this application? Please step forward, make sure you are close to the mic or take it out, and state your name and address for the record, and then you have up to fifteen minutes with which to present your case.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Jessica Forsier, I'm with East Dunstable Properties. Also with me is John Forsier and Lisa Adams, who I'll explain who that is. We're currently, we currently own this lot, but we'll be building the proposed house for Lisa and Craig.
But your address, can even if it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, 24 Merrimack Street is the business address.
Thank you very much.
In Nashua. We will, we own the lot currently, but we'll be building the proposed house for Lisa and Craig Adams to own and live in with their aunt. We're requesting a variance to exceed the city's maximum driveway curb cut by twelve feet. Due to several ongoing health concerns, of which one has artificial discs in their neck, one has several herniated discs, and the other has had recent falls and severe arthritis in her knees, Lisa and Craig have requested that we build them a single-story home with a total curb cut of thirty-six feet, allowing each of them to be able to enter each of their garage bays directly. Yes, two on one on Burnett and one on East Dunstable. This style home and driveway positioning would accommodate the needs of this family best. A hardship exists for this lot due to it being situated on the corner of Burnett and East Dunstable, where it is required to have two front setbacks and two side setbacks. Additionally, it's a very narrow lot. Due to the narrow lot, the home would need to face Burnett Street, as it being a ranch. Facing Burnett Street, with that being one of the front setbacks at twenty-five feet, it's impossible for the driveway to fan out after the curb cut, which is what would happen on a regular lot as opposed to this cornered, narrow lot. This is why we are requesting a variance to exceed the city's. This is why we are requesting a variance to exceed the city's maximum driveway curb cut by 12 feet. Granting this variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood nor diminish the values of the surrounding properties in any way. I believe it would actually increase values with a new home there. The style of the home and the look of the driveways on Burnett and on East Dunstable would fit in with the driveways that are currently on both of these streets. Also, in no way would allowing the homeowners this additional 12 feet of curb cut threaten the public's health, safety, or welfare as this substantial justice would be done by granting this variance to these new homeowners.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Neely, and then Mr. Carrier.
So just to reiterate, your testimony is both of these driveways are going to lead into garages?
Yes.
So there'll be a garage facing towards East Dunstable?
There will be a garage facing towards East Dunstable, yes. That's what we're proposing. Initially, our plan actually had the garage closer to Burnett, but which would have required two variances. So we did make a change, and they switched and put the garage further back on the property so that it was more than 50 feet from the intersection, so that it was safer. So we did make that change and also got rid of one of the variances as well, so.
One more question. So the property next to you is the established property, the large brown house. Where's their driveway? I can't think of it off the top of my?
On East Dunstable, on the right side.
Is it right close to that, or is it?
No, it's on the right side of the prop, of the brown house.
Spaced out.
So there, it is spaced out, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier.
Yeah, is this, is what they're proposing to be built, a single-family, a two-family, an in-law?
A single-family. Single-family home.
Okay.
The building permit was submitted. Did you, do you guys not have those plans?
No, we do not.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I do have, okay, I do have copies of, one second. It is a single-family home, though, to be completely clear. It is not an in-law or a two-family. Okay, here's, okay, so I have the floor plan layout of the single thing. The only thing is, is that the only one I have has the garage in the first, the smaller garage in the first spot, not where we moved it to.
You just bring it over here and we'll just circulate it around, and do you need it back?
The garage is here in this, which is the Burnett side. We swapped it and moved the garage here.
If you're not talking into the microphone, they can't hear you on the.
I'm sorry. I thought that you guys had those from our, the building permit that was submitted.
We have the, we have the lot planned, but we don't have the?
I apologize.
Just another question while that's circulating around is, has this property been before us before?
It was before us. We brought it before you. We were initially, before, we had homeowners that we were building for. We brought it in, we were trying to do two lots out of the one lot.
Okay.
And we were denied.
So I guess a question for Mr. Falk is when a property comes before us, like, and there's been another case, isn't that normally included in our packet?
It depends. This is a totally different type of a case.
Okay.
That was a two-family.
Okay.
Two-lot subdivision.
Two-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
It wasn't like this at all, so we didn't.
Okay, no problem. I was just curious.
This is a totally separate and distinct request.
Mr. Boucher.
So what, I know you spoke about the other, flipping the garages, the garage for the driveway on East Dunstable. Was there any other considerations like trying to, I know you spoke that we do have that, we do have a 50-foot rule for the intersection. But was there any other consideration designed to literally, for example, have three garages lined up together? All on Burnett Street and then have a design that worked internally from that point of view? The reason for that is, again, I recognize, well, as a lot of us do, unfortunately, East Dunstable Road is sometimes a racetrack, right? And I've seen a few times where people were trying to pull out of their driveways backing out on East Dunstable Road, and that's kind of not a great thing. Now, the position of this home, this lot, is up near Main Street, where if the light is green, arrow green, I mean, it's like, you barely tap your brakes coming down a hill. So I'm just, this is a concern for me. I'm just kind of looking at that. And I, and the way I'm looking at it is sometimes I wonder, I was wondering about this, where Burnett Street is not really a really busy street. You know, it just serves kind of that neighborhood. And I know sometimes it's a cut through to get to neighborhoods parallel with Main Street. But I just didn't know if there was ever a consideration. Knowing that you'd have to get variance, you know, the area variance anyways for width, I didn't know if there was a consideration to try to get the garages on Burnett Street without having to ask for a second variance.
So I think two things. One, the, when the home or homeowners to be, had it designed and were bringing their aunt in to live with them, they were kind of trying to, with the, you know, architect, trying to figure a way that they have a little privacy because they're all living in the same house together as a single family. So they were trying to create that. So that was why I think they came up with the design in the first place. The other thing was is that, at that point, we knew we couldn't fan the driveway to go through anyway, so we'd still need a variance. So we're trying to, you know, help them get what their desired outcome is. And I guess I don't see East Dunstable as so much of, to be honest with you, I travel the road at least two times a day, and that the brown house is next door. We currently own that. I've been in and out of that driveway a million times. And if you, you know, you come out, you look for traffic, I haven't had an issue with it. So I guess I never thought of it that way. And also, that's the street that the driveway is supposed to be on technically. So I, I guess I never, we didn't consider, consider it as a good option.
All right, just a question.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Carrier?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa Adams. I live at 1465 Hooksett Road in Hooksett, New Hampshire. I've just, we're looking to move back to Nashua so that we can provide some care to my aunt, who has never been married and is a lifelong resident of Nashua. We have lived in Nashua most of our lives and are looking to move back. We want to be able to provide care for her. Like I said, she has no other family, so we wanted to do that. We both live in townhouses now that don't allow, currently to keep, keep her safe. She's having trouble with her knees. She's got a severe arthritis. She's fallen recently. So a ranch is really the only option for us. Having her moving to our house, we're trying to have as much privacy as we can as a couple and let her have as much independence as possible. So just allowing that separation, she was, you know, to have all the garages on one side, if that's even an option, would be mean that she would have to keep traveling through the main, you know, our part of the house to get to her bedroom. And she really wanted, you know, some privacy and independence to come from her garage into her room. So that's what we're looking, looking to do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Neely.
So I believe that we're all, we appreciate what you're trying to do with your aunt. But back to what you gentlemen were talking about, we're really concerned about East Dunstable Road and the safety of somebody backing in and out of that driveway. I think, I think some of the board members here are probably concerned you're setting yourself up for some type of incident with somebody getting hit coming out of that driveway, which is why we're questioning why they're not all on Burnett Street. So we understand your reasoning inside, but having been in Nashua for a very long time and having been some of that fast-moving traffic on East Dunstable Road, we're really concerned about that. And that is going to be part of the discussion up here. So maybe you could allay my concerns on that of having your aunt pulling in and out of that driveway.
She is a good driver, has not had accidents. I think she's, you know, mentally competent to make the right decisions and be extra careful. I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know building laws and zoning rules and all that, but my understanding is that's where the driveway would be if it was a single home. It's that's, and I could be off. I, so I never really thought of that. Like I said, she's lived and grown in Nashua, and that was not an issue for her when we picked that, that land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, Mr. Boucher, I didn't see you.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I, thanks for being there to take care of your aunt and
Thank you.
telling us, telling me your story. That's what I wanted to say.
I appreciate that.
I'm just curious, with this design, is there any specific plans for the, for the left side of the home on Burnett Street? And the reason I'm asking is, was there, is there an opportunity? I'm not redesigning your drama, just in my mind, just asking. Was there, is there an opportunity to move this footprint down without encroaching on the side, on the rear setback of East Dunstable Road, which would be, you know, again, the side on Burnett Street? So on Burnett Street, if you're facing the house where the two-car garage is, is there an opportunity to move that more to the left, the whole structure?
I would have to defer to the builder. I don't, I don't know that answer.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, did you want to respond to that? Yeah, he's here to speak in favor, and he can answer Mr. Boucher's question. Just state your name and address, sir, for the record.
My name is John Forsier. 24 Merrimack Street is the company address. We could move it down towards the rear, I guess you'd call it the rear setback. In doing that, if we wanted to, we could put a 24-foot driveway on East Dunstable, and then we'd have enough setback to fan it to a three-car garage. But that just puts a three-car garage on East Dunstable instead of a one-car. So they'd be pulling five or, you know, three or four cars in on East Dunstable instead of one. So I don't know what that would help. What would that help? Would that make it less dangerous?
No, I'm just asking a question for, probably for some discussion.
Oh, okay. It could move. It could, it could, because that, because that becomes a side setback now, right? The 31 feet?
The 31 feet?
Mr. Falk has a comment. Well, since this is a corner lot, there's two fronts and two sides. So Burnett and East Dunstable are fronts, and the other two lot lines are both side yards. So they're both shown on the plan. Kate can bring it up. There's a little dotted line that shows the setback lines. Kate, if you want to point to them, it's that line there.
I see it now, yeah.
So it could shift up about, oh, probably
19 feet?
20 feet or so, give or take. The driveway on Burnett, the two-car driveway on Burnett would really stay the same. It would just move up a little bit. And the driveway on East Dunstable, it would just make it longer. I don't know really what that would solve. I mean, there's ample room in that driveway for a car to pull in and out of a garage and come to, come to the end of the driveway and look both ways.
We've looked at it a million different ways.
I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Please step up to the mic, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board. My name's David Campbell. I live at 10 East Dunstable Road, immediately across the street from this lot. I'm here not only representing myself, but I've been authorized by the neighbors to speak for them as well. And I'll give you their names and addresses. Tom Carrier, one of my neighbors, is zooming in. He's located with his wife Melissa at 8 East Dunstable Road, right next to me. And Brian Monahan and Betty Richmond are at 9 East Dunstable. They're on the opposite corner I am. If you look at 10 East Dunstable, I'm straight across the lot. I'm on the, I'm on the southeast corner with Eastman and Brian Monahan. And Betty Richmond are at the northwest corner. They're at the Brick House on the other corner. And then we have the Prats, Sonia and Larry. They're at the southwest corner. All of them have discussed this, and we've all, we all are opposed to this variance for a number of reasons. The number one reason being safety and congestion, which kind of loops back onto safety. East Dunstable Road has become a racetrack. I've lived there for 35 years. I've watched it happen. But isn't just, it's on East Dunstable. It's at an intersection that's very, very widely used. We, the neighbors worked with the mayor, the Board of Alderman, and the Public Works Director to get a flashing pedestrian light there. It's been there less than two years. It helps, a little bit. You push it, and you pray they stop. But it just shows you that there was that need to put that in. Another thing you have to look at is Hayward's is down at the end of Eastman. So people come from the other neighborhood, Burnett's the feeder, they walk across that pedestrian crossway, and they go down to Hayward's to get their ice creams and back, all the time. It's a wonderful thing. But East Dunstable's, you know, is very congested there. There's a bus stop right in front of my house, right directly across from 7 East Dunstable, the subject property. That also comes in. So all these factors show that this intersection is very, very congested, and there's been safety problems. Now, with respect to the builders, who've been there a few times, I've lived there and with, since COVID, being in my home office, looking down on it, I've seen everything. And there's been four accidents that I personally witnessed in the last two years that were terrible smash-ups. This is the remnants of the last one, which was about a month ago. I picked these up on the sidewalk before I came over there. These pieces, the cotton. The big pieces, the neighbors have all been putting in our trash buckets as we, as the snowbanks melted. I personally saw a man get pulled out of his car who was unable to move his lower half of his body. And everybody's trying to keep him down until the police got there. These are all, this is four accidents I saw in the last two years. Excuse me, I got a cold. That's why I can't eat some water here. So all that being said, it's safety, it's congestion. The pedestrian crossing, you know, is, it's flashing there for a reason. Now, if you want to go through the statutory, the statutory variances requirements, I think, I think there's some issues here as well.
Mr. Campbell, I am also going to caution you to watch the clock. You have 2 minutes and 20 seconds, sir.
Fine. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Well, I think safety is the public interest, and this is contrary to that. Number two, owing to special conditions, a little enforcement, literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in necessary hardships. There's no necessary hardship here. There's plenty of room on Burnett, much safer street, to have a driveway. Asking for an additional 12 feet so you go on to East Dunstable is not a necessary hardship. And it can't relate to the parties. It has to relate to the property. The spirit of the ordinance will be observed. I don't think it does observe the spirit of the ordinance. Substantial justice will be done, not according to all the neighbors who have been there for decades each. And lastly, the variance would not diminish the value of that surrounding properties. Well, to the extent that area becomes more congested and less safe, we all feel, the neighbors, that this would be, you know, a detriment to safety, detriment to the neighborhood. And that would be a detriment to values as well. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Or Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Mr. Carrier?
I didn't, I don't remember whether or not the traffic backs up to where you are, you know, around 5:00 in the afternoon or not. you know, around 5:00 in the afternoon or not, because my current job, I'm not going down that way anymore. And so, does it back up that far or not?
Almost every day, it backs up past Eastman and probably two more blocks down, past Hayden. I know because I have to get on my driveway sometimes during rush hour and, you know, you have to wait for the good graces of somebody to let you out. It's become a problem. The traffic's become a problem. And like I said, the other elements there, the bus stop, the flashing light, the the accidents right at that intersection, right at that spot, right between my house and the subject property. I think I'll say, this is not the place to put, introduce another element, another way to increase the safety hazards there.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for the time. I'll remove the
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Then, Jessica, you have the opportunity to respond to Mr. Campbell's comments.
So it doesn't sound like
Just can you pull that mic down?
I'm sorry, I'm short. Doesn't it sound like what the opposition is against is against the variance? It sounds like they're against what's allowed there in the first place. So I don't, it's two different things. I don't, I guess I just don't understand how it meshes. I totally appreciate that East Unstable can be a racetrack and the congestion there. Like I said, I travel it a minimum of two times every day. I travel to downtown every day, several times a day with kids and work and everything else. So I am sitting in that traffic and I, and I guess I beg to differ that the people who are living on that street that already have driveways there, I guess are necessarily the people who are causing the accidents. I think the racetrack issue is people flying through that aren't living in those houses. And I, and I also feel like, why should the people that have lots on East Unstable Road currently be able to have driveways there, but yet that's falling into this, when really that's not what the variance was for? It's not a question of whether or not a driveway can go on East Unstable or not. We can put a driveway on East Unstable and not even be here right now. We could put a two, two and a half story house there with a longer driveway and have three, four cars coming in and out of it with, with never being standing here. So, and I am concerned for safety here. I don't, I'm not saying that we don't care about it at all. We do care about it. It was one of the reasons also by moving that driveway further away from the intersection, because we knew that it was important not to congest it. I, but I also feel for the size of the lot and the fact that it's on a corner and that the setbacks are different for this corner lot and the need that they have for it being a ranch. I guess I could more understand if the opposition had an opposition to the actual variance that we're here for. Which it doesn't sound like there's any opposition for the extra footage of a curb cut. It sounds like there's opposition for there being a driveway on East Unstable, which is not what we're here for. So I think that's it. So
Thank you. And, Mr. Campbell, you have the opportunity to speak and would you, I don't know if I should refer to you as Attorney Campbell or?
No, I'm here representing myself. And my neighbors. Again, they authorized me to do so. Now, as an attorney, just as neighbors. I did, I did fail to give you, I think, the name of the one that lives in the southwest corner on the corner of Eastman and southwest corner of Eastman and East Unstable, Larry and Sonia Pratt. They're the other neighbor that's on the corner. So all three butters on the corner and, and the carriers all are opposed to this. You know, we're not here to rewrite the plan. We were showed, we were shown a plan that shows 24 feet on Burnett and 12 feet on East Unstable. And we don't think that's a good plan. I don't believe, even though they said, well, we could put 24 feet on East Unstable. I don't think they're going to. I think you're going to have a prime driveway on Burnett because it's hundreds of cars and not thousands and thousands of cars every day. This, the second one, a luxury it seems, I think just adds to the congestion, adds to the, you know, the pedestrian crossway hazards there and and in keeping with the statute. So what, it was a hardship. I think those really tick pretty loud. So, again, we respectfully request that the board turn this variance down. Thank you.
Thank you. At that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
So my issue is not, I don't have an issue with the plan with the request for the overage of the drivers. I don't even know, I don't, I don't have a direct issue with the driveway, having a driveway on East Unstable because, as we know, it could have been a house designed, they would have driveway designed on East Unstable and they wouldn't have to be here. So, again, just my thoughts, right? So I'm looking at this as, we're asking for an extra 12, 12 feet. I think that they've described what the plan is, who their, who their customer is, what, how they're building a house and for the reason. I think there is, it's, it's a viable argument in my, in my, in my mind that they're looking for that third pocket spot for an aunt that's going to live in their home. So I have no issues with that. What I'm just looking at, and I'm not saying that it's not going to work or it's, what is, I'm just looking at, and I'm not creating another application, but I personally would just say right off that I would have been very comfortable with an ex, whatever needs to be done to keep all the driveways on Burnett Street. But I know that that, that's why I asked if the house could get pushed down. I'm just trying to understand if there was even enough room to meet so that only one variance could be asked for. So so in the end, those are just my thoughts. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of the application. I'm just, just trying to express kind of what my feelings were when I saw this and I, I was pretty much uncouth what they were trying to do. I was just trying to understand, you know, if this was really a two-family aunt, but it was described, you know, it's described specifically as a, as a one-family. And then, you know, the purpose of the extra driveway is clear. I was just wondering what opportunities could have been done in the design to put all those together on Burnett Street. So that's kind of where I was. So, again, not disputing the fact that a driveway, a 24' wide driveway could be put on East Unstable Road by right. That's not an issue. I think there's conditions that exist on that roadway. And, yeah, that's correct. I mean, it, it, the racetrack's a racetrack. That's an enforcement issue. You know, but at this point, I don't know, I, that, I don't, I don't feel right now that I would deny it for any reason. Those are just my thoughts about the extra driveway. So what I'm saying is, is I'm in favor of the overage. I'm just thinking about how this could have been achieved some other way. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, actually, that, Mr. Boucher's last comment sort of gets to the heart of my consideration because one of the points of law says, "The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance." Now, we heard that the the applicant's customer wants, doesn't want the aunt to go through the other part of the house to get to her area. And I certainly understand that, but I'm also looking at the request for two driveways. And I, my neighbor across the street, their driveway is not on the street that their address is, so that's really not a concern. That we do take safety into consideration. I remember we had a, quite a long discussion a few months ago about a property on Main Dunstable down by, closer to Bicentennial School, where there was an issue about, about a driveway and, and we were very worried about safety there. It seems to me that accommodating, you know, the aunt and her car could be done with a three-car garage on Burnett Street. So I, having trouble understanding how this request meets the first point of law that we have to consider. But I have not come down one side or the other on this right now and interested to see what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Well, I appreciate, I think the applicant and the builder have exhaustively thought about this design and come up with this as a design that works for them. One of the criteria which we're bound to stick with is, is the property and not the needs of the owner. And, and as much as I appreciate, you know, the lonely aunt, you know, being taken care of here, to me, this request is all about, you know, the the health considerations of the, of, you know, the proposed owner and, and not at all with what's with the land. And, I mean, an additional, so when I first asked the question, is this, it wasn't clear to me. If this said it was a single family, I missed that. And I thought, well, is this going to be a two-family? I didn't know if it was permitted. Is it going to be an in-law? You know, I, I kind of think it screams of an in-law in the future, you know? But of course, the other thing I was struggling with is if, you know, a, a, a structure or property that asks for a variance for a driveway, which is not, you know, a criteria for an in-law. And does this end up being an in-law with two driveways and two distinct areas? But so I just had thought about that prior to hearing the testimony tonight. But I guess I'm struggling with, with the need in the land for the overage of 12 feet. I was also thinking, maybe this is a situation of a table because I, like Mr. Boucher, say, well, there's perhaps, not that I'm creating another variance, but perhaps there's some rationale for overage of a driveway on this property, but not perhaps in this configuration. You know, I'm looking at the wording of it. It specifically advertises 24 on Burnett and 12 on East Dunstable. And I am struggling with that specific configuration at this time, but so that's, that's where I'm at. Perhaps there's some overage warranted for a driveway, but I'm struggling with it, with this configuration. I totally appreciate the need of the applicant, what they're trying to achieve with the builder, but again, that's not a criteria we're supposed to be considering. It's in the land, not, not, not the owner.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
So I, I also have concerns about the safety, as we've talked about, of, of the driveway onto East Dunstable. You know, as Mr. Boucher was speaking, the thought of the table had popped into my head as well. And I think that we've certainly worked over the last few months with, with several groups who've come in here and maybe we've said, hey, maybe we can work together and let's table it for a couple of weeks and let's, let's rethink this. I'm also not opposed to a larger driveway. What, what I'm really concerned about is how do we not add another safety hazard onto East Dunstable? It's a racetrack. And it's not just the, the person pulling out of that driveway, but it's also the folks driving down, down that road. I personally would love to see all of the, you know, the amount of feet that we agreed to empty into Burnett Street. So I'm having a tough time with this. And if, if someone were to move forward and request a table, I certainly would, would be on board with that.
Thank you. I too like the idea of a table and will most likely ask the applicant if that is amenable to them. I look at this and I think, I understand the need to try and help somebody who is a family member. But down the road, this is going to be an individual with a disability as we move further down. And you have to think about what the Disabilities Act would require and some of those things if this is what they're trying to do. And that may help ease some of the driveway issues. It may make them tweak this to think, how can we make it accessible? Because accessibility seems to be the biggest point that we are all stumbling on right now. The inaccessibility of one street and the need for access to that street. By right, they can do it, but they themselves have said for safety, they wanted to find the best way to do this. So I think at this point, I'm going to ask.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
One question before we do that. To Mr. Falk. If, if we would move forward a table and ask, the applicant wants to do that, because of the wording of this application, does it have to be re-advertized? How does that work?
Probably so, since the advertisement was for a 24-foot driveway on Burnett and 12 on East Dunstable. If it goes to something like 32 or 36 feet on Burnett, that's, that's a different, it's a different ad. I, I think to be, to be safe and to do it all legally, it would have to be re-advertized.
And is that, is that, does the applicant incur some more cost because of that? Due to our maybe wanting to maybe see some other opportunities or options? How does that work?
At this point, I, I, I'm not really sure of the answer to that right now. There's a couple of other options that we'd have to do administratively to try to not make them pay again, since it's not their decision. So I, I think I'll have to talk it over with our staff. I'm not sure.
So, I, I would be in favor of a table. I think what I am is, I just want to, I'm just throwing out the concern that I don't want to cause the applicant any more, any, any cost, but that's really up to them. Maybe they come up with a plan that says, hey, this is, all we need is a driveway coming up from East Dunstable, but that may not be feasible with what they want to do. So I'm just, just talking aloud to, just to express that they know that. I am not asking them to design anything specifically on Burnett. It's just that I think there's a feeling that if something could be achieved, it may be better for, you know, for what we're looking at. But again, I just wanted to throw that out there and that's the reason why I asked Mr. Falk a question.
No, it, it makes sense. There's new rules and regs now around ZBA and if I remember correctly, and I may or may not be remembering correctly, if it is we who ask, I don't think they would incur that cost. But again, I would want to research that piece in the statute as well. But to your point, Mr. Boucher, and to Mr. Lionel's point, where they point one in the variance, both the applicants acknowledged that there were other ways to do this, to redesign and reconfigure. So that would complicate point one.
So I think, I think, just to simplify it, I think we asked, we tabled the case. The applicant could come back and say, you know what, this is what we, this is what we got, this is what we're asking for. We're not changing anything. Or here's an opportunity for something different or whatever. So I, I think that at this point, I think we just need to table it and let the applicant come back and tell us something, you know, show us something different or this is, we're really settled on this. We want you to decide on this.
Okay.
So
Actually, yes, you can ask a question.
Well, we'll take a little vote to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, we can or, okay, I always err on the side of having the whole board come to the conclusion I always err on the side of having the whole board come to the conclusion and make the determination. And so, we would like to take a motion now to reopen so we can have a conversation with you. And so that's what I'm going to ask for. Mr. Boucher, Mr. Courier, would somebody like to make a motion to reopen the public, close the public meeting and reopen the public hearing?
I'd make a motion to close the public meeting and reopen the public hearing to, and I think it should be to all parties here, to get some questions answered for the applicant.
Thank you. And I'll second that. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. Could one or both of you approach the mic, please, and ask your questions and enter into this conversation again?
My first question is how-
Oh, excuse me, my point of order. Please state your name and address.
John Forcer, 24 Merrimack Street. My only question will be if you guys table it and we come back? I have no problems with that, but how long is that? Time is kind of on their side a little bit, because they sold their house already, that kind of stuff.
Could we?
If, if, oh, sorry about that.
Good job, Mr. Falk.
Lay off the gym. If we have to re-advertise it, it would have to go back on the May 9 meeting. We couldn't get it to the next meeting, because that ad has already, that ad has already gone out.
Okay, but we don't know that we have to do that, correct?
Correct.
So-
I don't really see a way to have 36 feet without getting a variance on Burnett. So if you're looking at additional, like switching the driveway from East Dunstable to Burnett, it's different from the ad. The ad is only 24 on Burnett.
Okay.
So this would be to exceed the width on a street that hasn't been advertised for that.
But are we sure that's the plan they're going to come up with?
I don't know.
See, so-
I don't know if they even know yet, right now. We haven't-
I have ideas.
And they need to step back and maybe think about that. So if they have to think about that, and we have tabled other cases without having people incur costs or re-advertising, couldn't we just go forward with a tabling motion as we generally do? Because we don't have all the answers.
You can table it to the next meeting without any problem at all. That will also give the Forsters time to look at a redesign, and then it will give our staff enough time to re-advertise in time for the May 9 meeting.
Can I make one comment?
Best of both worlds for them, really, for-
Yeah, yes, sir.
In the very beginning, we wanted both driveways on Burnett, but we were trying to show up here with the least amount of variances. So there's a million different ways that you can have two driveways on Burnett. It's just going to create more than one variance.
Well, then, I guess that's on us.
I guess. I like, we would have rather put the driveways there.
And I think we understand, but we also have all these options, and so-
And what's silly is the abutter across the street from Barnett is in favor, but she didn't really have any say in this. I don't know. We can redesign. I just hope, I don't even want to look back at her, because she's thinking a whole other month is what she's thinking right now.
I, and we're trying to do the best we can-
Okay.
-with the information we're given.
Yeah.
And we try to expand horizons.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, I have a question.
Mr. Boucher.
So, you have the complete right to say, no, I want you to go forward tonight with-
I get it, yeah.
Right? So, and we're just, you know, we're not, why don't you understand that we're not forcing you into anything?
No.
Worst-case scenario is, nothing changes, you come back to the next meeting, which is still in, I think, your window-
Yeah.
-if nothing changes.
Right.
Or if something different happens. Again, I don't know what the opportunities are. I know that originally, we're looking at that, it's an extra variance because of the 50-foot wide-
The 50, yeah.
...that we're trying to get through was whether or not there was an opportunity or design, I'm not designing it for you-
Mm-hmm.
...to get a section where it's 36 feet wide, wherever that is on Burnett Street, and then-
And what that, what that would do is be two variances again. Because you'd have a 24-foot, you could go, oh, you're saying just one, you're just open the whole thing? I see what you mean.
Just a three-car garage, because I understand it's a shallow.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, I'm not here to design law, and I don't want to create-
Right, right. I just texted the architect and said, do not move anything yet. We might have to, so, we've already moved this thing so many times. His bill is definitely more than the variance application fees every time he comes back, is what I'm saying.
And that's why I'm also sensitive to the cost that's incurred.
Right, yeah.
So, again, I think you heard our concerns. I think it's really up to you whether or not you want us to move forward, or you table for it till the next meeting. And if we're still in the same spot, if I don't know if there's any harm in your project at that point.
Well, then, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you like this board to move forward tonight or to table this motion till April 25th?
I would like the board to table it till April 25th.
So moved, I move, we table.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, I just want to point out that our opposition was not to the widening of the driveway from 24 to 36. It was doing it on East Dunstable Road. That's, that's our concern. You know, if you want to put variances on Burnett, I don't think you're going to find any opposition from the neighbors. It's clearly because, and again, they say, well, we have a right to put 24 feet on there. But that's not the plan we were shown. We were shown, you know, a small driveway coming out onto East Dunstable Road. And that is the nature of the opposition of the neighborhood. It is not, it is not just to, you know, solve this problem. If it can be solved on Burnett, I don't think you'll find anybody in opposition to it. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. I mean, and we have to entertain also that they have by right the ability to put a 24-foot driveway on East Dunstable. I think what we're all trying to do is find a solution that encompasses all concerns.
I agree. I just don't think, if you have a choice of 24 feet on East Dunstable, 24 feet on Burnett, I don't think that's a hard decision to make. But it's the extra 12 feet that are causing the problems.
Exactly.
And that 12 feet coming on East Dunstable Road, for the neighbors, who've been there a long time and see everything that goes on in that congested little area, that intersection, that's our, that's our issue. We don't, I don't think you'll find anybody opposing one or two variances on Burnett.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are we good? Then I'm going to make a motion to table to April 25th. Thank you, Mr. Courier, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the table.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. So the motion carries and it will be tabled. It's tabled. Okay, do we move on with the next one? Yes. See, we are now in recess for five minutes. We, the board is now back out of recess. Excuse me?
You are not on the door.
Okay, we're good.
Awesome. No, we're good.
We're good.
Oh, we're back.
We're good.
We're all good.
Okay.
Saw you coming.
Okay. Maria C. Amorin and Josale Decales, owners, 30 East Dunstable Road, Sheet 111, Lot 42, requesting the following: special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 6, to convert a single-family home into a two-family home, and two variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3 for minimum land area, 9,824 square feet existing, 14,520 square feet required. This is in the RA zone in Ward 6. Is there somebody available to present this case? Does that say yes? I see.
Can you hear me?
I can now. Make sure you stay close to your microphone, sir, and just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Clayton Amorin, 18 Juniper Way, Merrimack. I'm here today for, translated for my father, who owns the property at 30 East Dunstable Road, and my mother, Josale Decales, Maria C. Amorin, from 15 Merrow Road, Merrimack.
Okay, you have up to 15 minutes to present your case, sir.
All right. We, this is the first time we, I'm doing this, so I'm sorry and apologize for any mistake I made to present the case, but we're trying to be forth. My family owned this property since 2002. It is on 30 East Dunstable Road and the corner lot with Eric Street. That's a single family. They purchased the property back in 2002, and they lived there until 2006. Once they leave on the property, on the basement, my grandma came to live with us, and they did a room downstairs with a bathroom, and she used to live on the property. My family, like I said, moved to Merrimack back in 2006, and since then, they use the property as a rent, and they rent the property and maintain the property. We act for the variance for the property to be turned to a two-family, has a single-family, three-bedroom on the top and on the back, you know, one-bedroom unit. We not going to do any alteration on the lot or around the property, and no change outside, just inside the property.
And what are the changes that you are wanting this board to understand that you are going to be completing?
Okay, I contacted the city, and I forgot the name of the officer that came and talked to me. We need to change import, like, exit door to the side of the property to be like a second exit from the unit. So we have one unit, one door that goes back to the property on the outside, and inside, I think we're going to have to build another, not entrance, but exit in case of any emergency. And the variance is, I think, the lot for where we're looking to get approved, request 14,520 square feet, and we have only 9,824, if I'm not mistaken, and that's what we requested. And also from, from being a single family to a two-unit house, which family?
Okay, so, from what I'm looking at, Clayton, I see here that there was an inspection, and is this the inspection from May 12, 2022?
Correct.
And so you are now approaching us almost one year later?
What happened was, we had a tenant. I'm just translated for them here, but I'll explain, because I was involved in the case. But we have a tenant that used to live there, and we had to bring him to court, and that took like a long time, because he wasn't paying rent. And it was like, we do not want to do any requests or any, like I said, change on the property with the tenant being there and we being in court to get him removed. So we, that's why I didn't apply before. We was waiting for the process to finish, so we can move forward with this request.
Well, that explains the length of time.
Correct.
And now, is the property empty?
The property just been rented to last, this month, I guess, the new tenant moved in, and that's what the house, the top house is occupied.
So nobody lives in the basement?
No. The basement is empty.
Okay. But there is a new tenant upstairs. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Courier.
Currently, in the, in the basement, how does an occupant get in or out of the basement? Is there a door to the outside, or does the occupant go up to the first floor and then exit the building?
Okay, it is a door that goes to the back, and it's a separate entrance from the main house on the front. So they do not need to go inside the other, the other spaces from the top, so they can go- top, so they can go directly from their unit, from their basement there to the outside door.
So it looks, so if, when there was a person living in the basement, did they normally go like out, like into the backyard?
Correct, sir.
And then how, where do they park, and where's the driveway for that unit? I mean, it looks like the front unit, there's, you know, a driveway on the East Dunstable, and what about for the proposed basement unit?
Okay, it is a, like, that unit was, like I said, we didn't build the unit that was like we did for my grandmother to live in, when she, we usually live there, and we have that back entrance that we put for her to get in and back. It was a way these stairs there, it was a bucket, I forgot the name, but it was a way to get out from that door. We just put like a covered door in a small place, and it has a parking. If you see the plans, it says four parking space back there.
And then where's the driveway from the parking space?
That goes from the Eric's, Erica Street, Eric Street.
Okay.
The house is on the corner from East Dunstable and Erica Street.
Yep.
And it always has been the entrance there since, I guess, my family purchased the property, if I'm not mistaken, and they have a parking there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Boucher.
Was there any other thoughts about whether or not any other opportunities, except instead of a two-family, maybe an in-law type of a request? Was there any opportunity for that? Did you think about that? No?
They'll live there.
They'll live there.
I get my answer. Thank you.
And so I understand, you said there was an entrance from Eric Street. Is there a driveway there? Is there a curb cut?
Correct, is a driveway that interests there.
On your street plan, there's a, on your street plan, it has been an existing driveway for a long time.
Okay.
On Eric Street.
I see it now. Okay, thank you, Mr. Boucher. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Sing num, there's no one here. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Do you see anything? No, I didn't either. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
Okay, so what we have here is, they created an illegal basement apartment and rented it out, and they're looking to legitimize it. That's one thing, and then, and there's, according to the ordinance, there's insufficient land area for a two-unit house, although we've dealt with issues like that before. I guess I'm trying to understand what the real need for this is, other than the applicant would like to rent out two units in this house. So I'm, I'm not convinced that this is the right thing to do.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did I step on your words?
No, you did not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Courier.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling a lot with the variance, because that's, it's about 67 or 68 percent of the square footage is in the land, and I'm, I'm not seeing any, any sort of uniqueness or hardship on the property that sets us apart. I, you know, obviously, an illegal unit was put in some years ago, and it was serving as an illegal unit. Mr. Boucher kind of alluded to the in-law. I mean, perhaps there's, you know, reason for that, but that's not what's before us tonight, and...
Well, it would require that the owner live there.
Live there, too. So it's just not, you know, in the cards here tonight, and I fail to find the criteria, meets the criteria for a two-family, for the variance for that, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Neely.
So I am undecided and could be convinced either way. You know, when you look at the regulations here, really looking at Regulation Number 5, is it, is it out of character with the neighborhood? I'm not aware of any multifamily houses right in that small area there. So that was my first thought as I, as I did a drive-by. I kind of looked around to see what else kind of jumped out at me. I, quite honestly, with this house, I never would have known it was a, it was two-family house set up there, with the exception of the large paved backyard. You know, that being said, I'm obviously concerned. You know, it's, it's always, it was obviously put together a long time ago, not a great setup to get folks in and out of there with fire egress. Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say, because I'm undecided. I could, I could be persuaded either way. This is, this is a relatively tough one. I am sorry for these folks. You know, they got caught, they got caught, and you know how much we love after-the-fact applications. Yeah, I'll leave it there. I could go either way.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
This one here, unfortunately, I'm struggling with that, with this application. I just did some quick math. The basement apartment, the usable for the basement apartment is 460 square feet, right? So that's really small, and, but again, it's asking for a two-family, and again, like, like Mr. Courier stated, I'm just having a hard time finding with the points of law that we have to meet with this. I, I, the reason I asked about an in-law was, is that, to me, again, this criteria there, too, this would make, I guess, perfect sense as an in-law with one of the owners living there, but that's not what's before us. And again, like Mr. Courier, I know this neighborhood pretty good, I don't, this is not the character of the neighborhood. Again, I could understand an in-law request for a property like this, but for a two-family at this point, I don't, I don't see it, I don't see, I just don't see where it fits.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, and like the rest of you, yeah, this is a toughie. However, I agree, it is the logical setup for an ADU or an in-law apartment, but again, a family member would have to be in the main portion of the property. I also think with climbing on almost 6,000 square feet short of what it needs to be a two-family, that's a lot. When I think of it, there's homes all by themselves, single-family homes, that sit on the difference that we are being asked to substantiate here. So I think I probably lean more not in favor than in favor. But maybe we should ask for a motion and see where we go. I feel bad, but I almost wish that, even though it took them forever to evict the tenant, I kind of wish maybe they had let the city know that they were having an issue, that there was an inspection, or I'm sure the city was aware, but that long term, without any kind of responsibility there and acknowledgement, is, that's tough. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Courier, I saw the hand. Thank you, sir.
I'm compelled to make a motion on the area variance, and this is for Maria Amorin and Jiskali DeKales at 30 East Dunstable Road, and the variance request is from Land Use Code 190-16. It's for minimum land area where 9,824 square feet is existing. The request, what's required is 14,520 square feet. Again, this is RA zone in Ward 6, and I make a motion to deny, because I think the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. This, I think the board finds that there aren't special conditions in the property that warrant a two-family home. I think the board finds that the property serves appropriately fine as a single-family home, as it has done for many years. I think the board finds it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this much of a small lot where so much 14,520 square feet is required. I think the board doesn't make an, I say the board has no, this motion, the board doesn't make an opinion on the effect of property, surrounding property values, but the board finds it is contrary to public interest and substantial justice is not served by providing a variance. So again, I make a motion to deny the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the motion to deny.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor of the motion to deny. Mr. Amorin, your...
Special exception.
Excuse me?
There's a special exception, too.
There's a special exception?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion on that, if you wish.
Please. Oh, I see it, yes.
So I make a motion on the special exception, again, for Maria C. Amorin and Jiskali DeKales of 30 Dunstable Road. The special exception is to convert a single-family home into a two-family home. It, I think the board, let me just, I make a motion to deny, because I think the majority of the board, anyway, feels that this would not, would be out of character with the neighborhood, in that the neighborhood is primarily, if not universally, single-family homes, and with it not meeting that criteria, I make a motion to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel, thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the motion to deny.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor of the motion to deny. Excuse me. Mr. Amorin, the board has denied this special exception and the variance. Any decision made by this board may be appealed by anyone of the public. They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, we ask that you please re-refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier to have any further discussions on where you may go from here, especially in lieu of the denial. And thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no minutes, no rehearing.
Agenda for regional impact.
I see no regional impact.
I see no regional impact.
I don't see any either. So it seems, Mr. Neely, Mr. Boucher, all know, okay, then there's no regional impact. So at this point, at 9:55, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So adjourned.
So moved, we're adjourned.